October Meeting of the Nags Head North Carolina Board of Commissioners, please come to order. This time let's begin our meeting with a moment of silence. Let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to this republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we remove item I-III, the Dare County Tourism Board appointment, as that's an item to be discussed by a future board of the Senate.
I will second that motion.
I think that was put on the agenda to let the county know that that has been, that is being referred by this board to the December board meeting. I think that's spelled out in the write-out.
I think they're aware of that and aren't anticipating anything from this board according to the follow-up email.
I think just to put it on there because I thought it was good business practice. Are there any other adjustments? All in favor of the motion to adopt the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign no. It's four to one, so order. Chief Frankly, having your employee.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you this morning to introduce Justin Nakin. Justin was born and raised in Greensboro. After college, he worked as a photojournalist for the Burlington Times. Interesting enough, he was able to work several ACC basketball tournaments, and I've seen some of his pictures, and they were really nice. He also deployed after Hurricane Katrina to New Orleans to cover that for the Burlington Times. Having a family member that was in law enforcement, Justin knew that's where he wanted to be, and he was able to join the Greensboro Police Department in 2008, where he served until coming onboard with us in August. His last assignment was on the Street Crimes Unit, where he focused on violent offenders and weapon charges. So needless to say, he's happy to be here in Nags Head with us. Justin is a North Carolina General Instructor and is a specialized instructor in defensive tactics and rapid deployment, active shooter. Justin's education, training, and experience are a benefit for our department, and I know he will be an asset to our town. Justin, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. The first person I'd like to present to you for his five years of service is Raymond Schoonmaker. Raymond started with the town on September 2012. Because of his hard work ethic, he was quickly promoted to Water Distribution Supervisor in July of 2014. His five years with the town, Raymond has taken many exams. He has completed his C, B, and A distribution certifications. He is our RCO, which is mandated by the state to be in charge of the distribution system. He also has his Cross Connection Certification also through the state of North Carolina. He has just moved to Kitty Hawk from Currituck with his wife Chelsea and their new four-month-old girl, Emory Elizabeth, who shall be four months old tomorrow. So, about anything else? Thank you, Raymond.
Thank you for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ray. Good luck to you.
The next person, Mayor, I'd like to present is Karen Hagie. Karen started with the town in September 2007. She lives in Currituck with her children, her husband Shane. Her two girls, Faith and Grace, go to ECU right now, and her son Grayson works in the family business and studying for his captain's license. The thing I can tell you about Karen is that when she came to the Public Works Department, she couldn't believe that we were still only in the 20th century, and she basically dragged us into the 21st century. So, dragged 30 men kicking and screaming and trying to get us to give her all the information that she needed was more than a task, and she is still working on me because I put everything on little notes and drives her crazy. But she took it upon herself, she went and purged all the files, filed them all electronically. She loves spreadsheets. If you need a piece of information, from how much trash was picked up this day, to how much we spent on tipping fees, what your cart number is, all the way to the FEMA forms to where we get paid much quickly now, because everything is all right there for FEMA to look at, is all due to this lady right here. So, without any other ado, I'd like to present Karen Hagie. Thank you, Karen, for your hard work.
Thank you so much. Steve, the face of that public work. Chief Zork, you have a Fire Prevention Week proclamation. You want to introduce that, and then I'll read it.
As everyone knows, October 4th, or 8th through the 17th is Fire Prevention Week. This year, Fire Prevention Week observes "Find Two Ways Out." And so, you know, that's really the focus for families and communities to practice finding two ways out of each residence. Make sure that, you know, in case of a fire, all of your smoke alarms are working properly, and that you practice this family plan at least twice a year. Making sure that you have a place, a rally point in the area for you to get out alive. And we're also focusing this year on closing your doors before you go to sleep. So that, we've found that that stops the spread of fire, and so, "Close Before You Doze" is the new, you know, actual terminology for keeping your home and your occupants safer in case of a fire. So, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The proclamation reads, "Whereas the town of Nags Head is committed to ensuring the safety of all those living and visiting in the town, and whereas U.S. Fire Departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in 78% of all U.S. fire deaths in 2015, and whereas many of today's products and furnishing produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments, and whereas these conditions leave people with as little as two minutes to escape from the sounds of smoke alarm sounds, and whereas a home fire escape plan includes two exits from every room in the house, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting, and whereas practicing the home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. Whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned "Two Ways Out," effectively serves to educate the public about all the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Therefore, on behalf of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners, I, Robert Edwards, Mayor of Nags Head, do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all the people of Nags Head to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year. And attend the Nags Head Fire Rescue Youth Night, open house on Thursday, October 12th, 2017, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the Douglas Avenue Ramali Fire Station. This is the fourth day of October. Do we have a motion to accept the resolution as read?
I move second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Now, do you want to tell us about the youth night?
I would. The community is invited to come out to our annual Nags Head Fire Prevention Youth Night. That'll be on October 12th. It's a Thursday night. Please come out. It begins at 5:30, runs till about 8:00 or 8:30. We've got plenty of activities for the kids, a lot of public education, the Fire Department, Police Department, some other town departments will be there. We have a clown, we have pizza, we have beverages for everyone. You can practice putting out a fire. The Kitty Hawk Kites Wax Hands will be there, and we have many, many other activities to educate you about smoke alarms and how to get out of your house safely. So, the Dare County Association of Fire Officers Smoke Safety Trailer will be there as well. So, we look forward to seeing everybody and welcome y'all to come out that night.
Thank you, Chief. I encourage everybody to come out that night. That's always a real fun time, a real educational time, and the kids sure enjoy it, and so all those older kids do too. So, I strongly encourage you to attend. Thank you, Chief. At this time, we have a presentation of a Town Hall Shipwreck Sign. There have been many, many people have asked a question about the shipwreck that's in front of Town Hall, and we've had Dr. Nathan Richardson and Dr. Kate Bukowski have done a lot of research on it and developed, helped us develop a new sign. I'd like for them to come forward at this time and make that presentation.
Hi there. My name's Dr. Nathan Richards. I'm the Maritime Studies Program Head at Coastal Studies Institute, and I'm also an associate professor in the Program Maritime Studies at East Carolina University. And before I give this short presentation, I'd like to thank the town for collaborating with us on this project, or allowing us to collaborate with you, and also thank the Commissioners for allowing us to present on this. I wanted to talk just very briefly about the shipwreck because there's one major revision that I think a lot of people are interested in, from the old sign to the new sign. So, this short presentation is reconsidering the shipwreck, which is known as BOB III, which is its state registration number, also known as the Nags Head wreck. So, this is the identification, the previous identification of the shipwreck from the old sign, which is that the wreckage was believed to be that of a ship called the Francis E. Waters. And we know lots of information about the Francis E. Waters from marine insurance registrations. And I've got some information here just to show you that it was built in Baltimore. It was a two-mast schooner. It was almost 100 feet long, and it has a very particular tonnage, and we have very good historical information about its life. It was caught in a hurricane. It was traveling from South Carolina to Philadelphia under master toll. It was carrying shingles and lumber. And it was wrecked in 1889 during a hurricane between sunset and dark. And critically, the Lifesaving Station report says that when the wreck was found, it was floating submerged and basically upside down. And that's one of the reasons that, I'll talk about it in a minute, about why it was believed that this wreckage belonged to the Francis E. Waters. In its aftermath, there were six lives lost. Two of those bodies were recovered, and some cargo and the hull itself was lost. They only recuperated $600 of almost $10,000, $10,500 worth of goods and the vessel itself. It's also very important to note that in that same event, a number of other wrecks were lost, and they were lost over a fairly large distance across the Outer Banks. So, it was an important hurricane. The wreck itself, which came to be known as BOB III, that means Buddy Island Beach, the third wreck reported to the state of North Carolina, was first found and reported by Vera Evans in 1975. It was uncovered a mile or so, a mile or so south of Whalebone Junction as a consequence of a winter nor'easter, which is a very common occurrence, and we see a lot of wreckage come out of our beaches during nor'easters. Reburied soon after, and over the next three years, it emerges and gets buried again, and different people interact with it, and eventually it becomes a problem that the town and some other organizations have to deal with. So, it reemerges in 1977 and 1978. There's a lot of information that I could talk to you about, but there's only so much time, so that's all for future discussion. Eventually, in 1978, the North Carolina Underwater Archaeology Branch sends out Leslie Bright, who's an archaeologist, and a photographer to investigate and record the shipwreck, and they do very good recording work. And what you see here is their drawing and interpretation of the wreckage that's on the beach at that point in time. You'll also know, and this is another part of the interesting story that I can't go into too much detail, but because it washes out to shore and comes back over and over again, at one point in time, it goes through Jeanette's Pier and destroys a part of Jeanette's Pier, and there's a court case. It's determined that the wreck is an act of God, and therefore, no one is responsible for repairing Jeanette's Pier other than Mr. Jeanette. So, they photograph and record it, and the state at that point decides that it's a menace and that it needs to be removed, and so that prompts some more recording. Leslie Bright, who I mentioned before, notes at that time that the wreckage is 52 feet long by 28 feet wide, estimates that on the beach is an extra 10 feet of wreckage that they could detect. And they take a lot of different measurements. Now, I'm not going to read all of the different measurements, but these are important clues for a reassessment of the wreck, because all of the different parts we know relate to other historical records, and then that will tell us what the overall ship size would have been. Because you're only dealing with a portion of the wreck, you're not dealing with the entirety of the wreck. So, we have all kinds of details that they've recorded, including they've made an assessment of the timber types, oak, et cetera, for different parts of the ship, so planks, et cetera. This is all very important diagnostic information for a maritime archaeologist to use to sort of do the detective work to identify what the wreck could be. It's recovered in 1978, and Leslie Bright writes a really good report, and he interprets the wreckage as the Francis E. Waters, because he hasn't had very much time to do the historical research. And the reason that he chooses that identification at the time is because of the date of loss and the general location of loss. But, over the course of writing his report, he also says there's a few strange inconsistencies. When he looks at the tonnage, at the size of the timbers, he says it must be a much larger wreck, because the frames, the ribs of the ship are not the right size for the Francis E. Waters. He notes that the ship might be 500 tons, but the Francis E. Waters is only about 150 tons, so something doesn't quite compute, and he mentions it. Later correspondence that we find in the archives of this state underwater archaeology branch, he even suggests that it might be even larger than that, 1,500 tons, and that it might date from 1840 to 1870, which doesn't exactly correspond with the Francis E. Waters. So, that's the site today. I did make one error. It's the bow section, not the stern section. You can see, if you compare this wreckage to the photographs that I showed you, it's undergone considerable change. You'd expect that. It's upside down, the ribs of the ship are sagging and touching the ground. When you saw it on the beach, it was much broader, indicating that it had much more of a width to the vessel. Now, we came out for a field school, and I think it was about 2010, and we did a whole range of different studies with my students, and a lot of those students were given individual assignments. And one of my students, whose name was David Botaro, did a ship reconstruction. So, he took that information, and he fared out the lines, and he reconstructed the ship, and basically confirmed that it couldn't be the Francis E. Waters. It's not a 150-ton ship. What you'll see here is this gray part. This gray part is what he interprets as being the section of the ship that you have, and the rest of these lines represent what is missing from the wreck. So, you can see how much has gone. That's led us to basically have all this information and to think this is a really fantastic shipwreck. It's great, not only for its historical significance and archaeological significance, but also it's a great teaching resource for me to teach about maritime history of the area, and also things like nautical archaeology. And then, Dr. Bukowski, who will talk in a minute, she was bringing her group of students out who were looking for projects, and we pitched, this is an idea that would be a really great evocative subject. We did also want to integrate this new information, which is that basically it's a mystery shipwreck. The unfortunate part of doing all of this sort of scientific analysis is we can say certain things about the wreck, and there are things we can't say. We believe it's an American-built east coast cargo hauler of some sort. It was probably 150 to 180 feet long, was about a 35 to 40 feet breadth, probably around 700 tons, but could be larger. But that does exclude the Francis E. Waters as being a candidate, just because we have such good information about the Francis E. Waters. The good news is there are a lot of other shipwrecks. We're in the middle of the graveyard of the Atlantic. That's no surprise. They show up all the time. We know that part of the problem with dealing with historical research out here is that a ship is reported, and then we don't know where it ends up. It might wreck at Nags Head and end up on a Kitty Hawk beach, and we often have to do the detective work to work out what's going on. There are many candidates, and I've listed just a few here that we have that fall within those categories that I've mentioned to you. So, there are others. It's a mystery wreck, and the only thing that will clear it up is more research.
Good morning. My name is Kate Bukowski, and I'm the Director of the School of Art and Design. And it's a pleasure to be here to talk about the partnership between School of Art and Design and the Coastal Studies Institute and the town of Nags Head. So, this project was completed in the fall of 2014. At that time, I was full-time faculty in the Graphic Design Program. And if you know anything about graphic design, graphic design is rarely about graphic design. Graphic designers need information to communicate. And so, this senior-level graphic design class, I partnered with the Coastal Studies Institute and Nathan, as well as some of his other colleagues at CSI, to identify communication projects that the students could work on, where they were working with scientists to communicate technical information to a lay audience, so to the general public. And Nathan quickly identified this wreck as an opportunity, because the existing signage, he thought, was inaccurate at the time, and also, it was a great opportunity for him to create or for him to have a piece of graphic design that could communicate all of the scientific information about the wreck. So, this is a picture of some of the students. In the fall of 2014, we came out to Manio and then out to the Outer Banks as well too, for two site visits. And at those site visits, the students had an opportunity to meet with Nathan and John McCord and some other faculty and staff at CSI. Prior to coming out to the visit, the students did a lot of research in terms of understanding the research process that graphic designers go through to find out information, to discover information, and to ask the right questions to effectively communicate their information. And Nathan generously shared his time with the students, talking about the... So, the students didn't just learn about the wreck, they learned about the field of maritime history. They learned about the breadth of what is involved, and what the students and the faculty do out at the Coastal Studies Institute and also in the Maritime Studies and Archaeology And at one point, the second visit that the students and I made out to CSI, they actually did a presentation of the work in progress. They did a presentation of the draft of the poster, and it was a team of students that actually did this work. So, it wasn't just one or two students, it was a whole host of them, actually. And there were multiple projects that the students worked on, and this was them actually presenting their work, getting feedback from Nathan and other members of the CSI staff to then go back and continue to improve the work. And I would just like to take a moment, again, to thank our partners here in the town of Nags Head, as well as at CSI. These sorts of partnerships, our service learning partnerships, help our students succeed. They provide a service to our communities, and I do think that they help transform our community in the East. So, thank you very much for your time today.
Dr. Bukowski, thank you very much for being with us, and thank you for doing this project. You cleared up a lot of things and uncleared a lot of things. I appreciate all the work.
Mayor, can I just say, that is so cool.
It certainly is. It certainly is. Thank you so much. This time is a time on our agenda where we have public comments. If there's anything that you'd like to bring to the board that's not the subject of a public hearing later in the agenda, we'd ask that you would hold your comments to no more than five minutes, and I'll ask Mr. Light if he would be our timekeeper, please.
Yes, sir.
Would anyone like to come speak to the board this morning? Here's your chance. We will, at this time, since no one came, we will declare the public comments section closed for this morning. On the consent agenda, I've asked Amy if she would give us a brief description of item number one on the consent agenda before we go to the consent agenda. Get a little skittish when we have a million-dollar adjustment on the budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, I talked to Cliff briefly about explaining some of the budget amendments that I did, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the one in question was about the encumbrance carryovers. So, essentially, we do that every year, and that is basically money that was budgeted in 2017 that hasn't been spent yet, and the majority of that is Doughty Park. Approximately $500,000 of that is for Phase II. What happened was, in fiscal year 17, we went ahead and budgeted for Phase II, and we budgeted for the revenues, the Part of Grant at $250,000 and the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau Grant at $226,750. We haven't started Phase II yet. We haven't received, obviously, the grant money yet, so I went ahead and carried forward what we had budgeted, and I actually have it on a sticky note on my computer to rebudget the revenues. However, I was kind of going to wait till when we could actually qualify to receive the revenues. With the Part of Grant, I just talked to Andy, we can apply for that quarterly as we go along, but with the Visitors Bureau Grant, we cannot receive it until we're actually done with a project and the sign is put in that it's sponsored, you know, from the Visitors Bureau. So, even though I went ahead and did the budget encumbrance carry forwards in anticipation of us getting ready to close our year, you will see another budget amendment at some point to at least counter $476,750 of that for the revenues. I'm just, again, waiting until we are actually eligible to receive them. So, that's the bulk of that. The other piece of that is our software conversion that we're doing. We get billed as we implement our phases, and we've completed one phase of that, so we're still working on other phases, so we haven't been billed for that, so that gets carried forward. And the water fund, the big one for $134,000, is of course the Water Master Plan with rivers. So, we are, you know, getting ready to get started with that. But, those are the big things, basically, that were budgeted in 2017 that just didn't complete, under contract, and we go ahead and carry forward. And this is something, again, that we do every year, so I hope that explains it, and if you have any questions, I have a very detailed list of all our open purchase orders.
Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you. No problem.
Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Move to second.
Second.
Move to second to accept the consent agenda in the discussion. If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Be none, so are. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
At this time, we have a public hearing to consider zoning ordinance text amendment to allow dormitory style housing as a conditional use within the C2 General Commercial District. I'll ask Mr. Light if you could conduct that public hearing for us, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing that would allow the board to consider a zoning ordinance text amendment submitted by Mr. Jim Rose, which would add the new use of dormitory and dormitory multifamily mixed development as a conditional use within the C2 General Commercial Zoning District. On this matter, the board sits as a legislative body and we will begin the public hearing by receiving the staff's analysis presented by Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good morning, Kelly.
As noted, this is a text amendment request that was brought forth by Mr. Jim Rose. The request is specifically to add dormitory and dormitory in conjunction with multifamily as a conditional use within the C2 zoning district. The request was made, Mr. Rose felt like this was an unmet need within the town. So he's proceeded with requesting the appropriate amendment. This first came to the planning board back in July. There was a applicant recommended ordinance and a staff recommended ordinance and they, there were some dissimilarities in the two proposed ordinances. And at that time, planning board asked staff, planning staff to go back and speak with the applicant and the architect working with the applicant to create a more cohesive text amendment request. So planning staff met with all the players on July 27th and we did compose a text amendment for the dormitory use that, that we feel addresses both staff concerns and meets the needs of the applicant. So essentially what we did there is we provided the definition for dormitory, which is included in your packet, very quickly. Dormitory means a commercial facility used for monthly rental housing of unrelated residents in a communal, non-transient living arrangement. The facility shall consist of separate sleeping, bathing and common living areas. And then the other things that we addressed were occupancy. The proposed occupancy is based upon sleeping room area consistent with the requirements within the International Property Maintenance Code. North Carolina has not adopted this code, but it is a widely known model intended to establish minimum housing maintenance standards for basic equipment, light, ventilation, heating, sanitation and fire safety. This document provides for the same regulation and safe use of existing structures to further the social and economic welfare. So in this property maintenance code, it essentially says that every bedroom shall have a minimum of 70 square feet of floor area and every bedroom occupied by more than one person shall contain an additional 50 square feet for every occupant beyond that. So in looking at a dormitory setting, in terms of the sleeping quarters of the bedroom, for the first person in that bedroom, there needs to be 70 square feet. And then to add a second, third or fourth person, you're adding on an additional 50 square feet. So that is what this ordinance recommends. We amended the definition to specify that this would be a commercial facility, that it consists of separate sleeping, bathing and living areas. The revised language would be an additional safeguard to prevent residentially constructed buildings from operating as a dormitory and also to discourage barrack style living scenarios. Couple more things here. When this was originally proposed to the planning board in July, it was written so as there were a lot of regulations included in the definition and that's something that we're definitely trying to get away from. So we revised that to just have the definition and the regulations shown separately. There's a, in addition to the occupancy calculation, we do have a requirement for restrooms. It requires at least one restroom in the facility to have two water closets, two sinks and two showers. And again, we felt like that would be a good mechanism to ensure residentially constructed homes did not turn into dormitory style homes. In addition to that, it does have to meet the North Carolina Plumbing Code. We did address open space and this is one of the many areas that the applicant had proposed and staff agreed was certainly adequate. They proposed 20 square feet per occupant within the structure, but no less than 220 square feet per unit or four. And we placed a maximum number of occupants within any dormitory facility at 25 occupants. So I can go through all of the conditions if you would like, but in terms of the staff recommendation, we do feel that affordable workforce housing is a need throughout the area. As planners, we would rather be proactive where possible. We know that it is a significant issue and this does not address all the concerns, but we feel like it's a positive step in the right direction. And we do recommend approval of the ordinance as it's been presented today. The planning board, they heard this at their August 15th meeting and they also recommended approval unanimously of the ordinance as it's presented today. Happy to answer any questions and we do have Mark Caston here representing the applicant today.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
I have one question that is, I don't see in, in here anywhere on the 34C that you require a sprinkler system for this facility. You have fire equipment access. There is no spelled out requirement that I can find that requires a sprinkler system for this facility. Is that in there somewhere?
It should be. Let me check. Of course. You were chief source. I don't want, no better than me.
Because it's a commercial building and because the use is residential, it's got to be sprinkled. So it's going to be sprinkled.
Yeah, I would like to, I would like to see that spelled out in, in the ordinance to make sure we don't have an argument on that later. But I, that was just the, the one thing that I was really looking for. I, I thought it was going to be, the code would catch us, but just wanted to make sure that it was brought out that it had, had to be a sprinkler facility.
If you look at item G, I think it kind of addresses somewhat of that. If the building is not considered sprinkler protected, the fire flow.
No, that's if it's not considered sprinkler protected. So that was, we, we talk, we talk all around it, but we don't spell it out that it has to be sprinkler protected. That was the only question I had, Kelly.
Any other questions for Ms. Kelly? Yes, Mr. Ratzenberger.
Yeah, just, just to, just to confirm, North Carolina has not adopted the International Property Maintenance Code.
Correct.
But we found nothing in, elsewhere in North Carolina code in contravention to any of this?
No, sir. This was.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, thank you very much. At this time, Mr. Caston, if you want to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant? I think that Kelly did a great job with that and I'm satisfied with that. All right, are there any other questions for, for Mr. Caston that the board would like to ask? Anything?
I think so.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, would any member of the public care to comment on this proposed text amendment? If so, this is your opportunity. If not, is there anything from the, any comment from the planning board? All right. All right, unless the board wishes to receive any further information on this, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposed zoning ordinance text amendment.
Is there any discussion?
Only that it's nice to see something come forward that addresses affordable workplace housing perhaps. A issue in the entire area.
I think the planning board and staff have done an outstanding job of developing disorders. As you know, over the years, we've had a lot of complaints about, about boarding houses and, and students being, and others being crammed into residential construction. I think this addresses all of that. The only concern I have is the, to have sprinkler protection spelled out and referred to it in there several cases and like in, in three G, if, if the structure is not considered sprinkler protected, I'd like to make sure there is, there is no question whatsoever about a unit like this being sprinkler protected. Is there any other discussion?
Well, first off, I'd like to include Mr. Rose and Associates and thanks for, you know, working through this. This has been a long, detailed, difficult process. But I do share your concern on the, when I read this, I kind of blew through, I think I must have blown through G and, and assumed there were sprinklers in there or I assumed that one of these other references to the fire code made it included by default. But now I'm concerned that that's not the case.
Again, brother, this got it. Yeah, I would like to thank Mr. Caston and Mr. Rose also for helping our staff work, work through this. It's been a couple long ways and I think it's a good ordinance. Do we have a motion?
I could. I'd like to propose that this be accepted with a simple sentence inserted in the ordinance that says that these structures in either case would be sprinkler protected. We could accept that this would be a very simple sentence that could be added editorially. I'd like to approve it now, get this on the books.
I will second, second that motion in discussion on the motions.
I said something.
Yes, sir.
It might be easy to do, do it this way. Our current ordinance right now for multifamily has a requirement for sprinkler protection. It's an actual condition and it's a paragraph and we could simply take that paragraph and put it in here. And it would, it says essentially what you just said, but it, it would make it consistent with some of the other things we have in that category.
That sounds good to me.
That sounds good. Would you like to defer action on this until we can get that inserted in the ordinance so we can adopt the ordinance as completed?
I can, I can, I can have it ready at this meeting.
Later in the meeting.
Paste it in there and.
All right, would you let us know when that's ready?
Sure.
If we have a consensus that we defer action until we have the actual language in the, in the ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. Light, is the consideration of the site plan by Quattle and Associates and consideration of the site plan by Boe Engineering, they need to be conducted as a quasi judicial?
Yes, sir. Do you want me to conduct that?
Yes, if you would.
I'll be glad to do that, sir. All right, at this time, we will begin the board's consideration of the site plan submitted by Quattle and Associates on behalf of Outer Banks Hospital, Inc. for the construction of a 4,516 square foot radiation therapy building. I'll remind the board that when the board is considering an application for a site plan under Town Code Section 48-524, the board sits as a quasi judicial body. This means that certain requirements apply to the board's consideration. Most importantly, the board's consideration and decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence. Crucial facts used to determine the outcome of this application must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses. While you may be presented during this process with copies of uns sworn statements, contained in letters, emails and such, such uns sworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence presented. Unsworn evidence such as letters or emails can never be used as a sole basis for your decision. The applicant during this process has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence and the procedures outlined in the ordinance must be followed. And the count, the board may also question any witness at any time during this process. In addition, when the, the board sits as a quasi judicial panel to consider this type of application, it is imperative that no member be involved in deliberations who has a conflict whereby that person would potentially be something other than an impartial decision maker. Impermissible conflicts include, but are not limited to, a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change, undisclosed ex parte communications, a close familial, business or other associational relationship with anyone affected by the application, or a direct financial interest in the outcome of this matter. Of course, previously undisclosed ex parte communications, which have not caused you to develop a fixed opinion, may be cured through disclosure of the facts or information obtained on the record. If any of the other situations are applicable to any of the members of the board, that member should be recused from participation by a vote of the remainder of the board. So at this time, I ask whether any of you have conflicts which would potentially make you something other than an impartial decision maker or have you had any undisclosed communications or information which you would like to disclose at this time?
I have. I, I have no conflicts and I have a completely open mind, but I do want to point out that in the staff summary of page, under architectural design standards, where it mentions that the Village Architectural Control Committee has reviewed this in advance of this meeting. I'm on that committee and we did, but our focus was mostly on the elevations and the building architecture design, not the site plan itself. But I have seen it and I just want to make sure we understand that.
And just, just to make sure, just to confirm, Commissioner Ratzenberger, you'll be able to make a decision based solely on the evidence presented during this, this proceeding?
Yes, as a matter of fact, the proceeding appears to include the elevations and architectural portion anyway, so, but.
All right, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any communications to disclose? Okay. All right, well, at this time then, we'll begin to commence the proceedings. We'll start by having the, all the people who wish to present evidence, please approach the town clerk so that she may administer the oath. That includes the applicant and town staff.
Thank you. As noted, this request is being brought forth by the Outer Banks Hospital to construct a 4,500 square foot medical facility. It's located at 4927 South Croatan Highway. We do have the site plan up on the screen, just to familiarize with its location. This is the existing Outer Banks Urgent Care. This is the vacant lot which they are proposing to construct on. There are parking facilities already on that property. And then just south of that is La Fagada Restaurant. And to the east, to the rear of the property, that is the Moon Gate subdivision. So this property is located within the Village, Village at Nags Head Hotel District. And in that district, medical office is a permitted use. In terms of the site requirements, they calculate law coverage a little bit differently in the village than we do townwide. Throughout the town, we just have a set number. The building cannot exceed 25% of the lot area and they are at 19.6%, so that is compliant. The parking area shall not comprise more than 45% and they are at 39.3%, so that is compliant as well. And they need a minimum of 30% of the total lot area in natural area or landscaped area and they are at 65%, so they comply with all the lot coverage requirements. Building height, buildings within the town can be 35 feet in height or 42 with an 812 roof pitch. This building as proposed is coming in at 33 feet in height, so it is compliant. In terms of architectural design, as Commissioner Ratzenberger has noted, this building has to meet both of the village architectural control committee standards as well as the town standards. It has been reviewed by the village. They have approved the proposed architectural design. For the town, they have to meet a minimum of 125 architectural design points through a residential design manual and they have done so with the use of a first floor porch, several dormers, appropriate roof pitch, base form simulated, shingle siding, beauty bands and column trends along the porch. So they meet the architectural design of both the village and the town. For parking, the project is compliant with the parking standard for medical office. The standard requires one parking space for every 300 square feet of gross floor area of each building or portion devoted to medical use plus one space for each employee or doctor. A total of 22 parking spaces is required and there's a total of 22 parking spaces shown on the site plan. I will note, I don't know how easy it is to pull it up on this, but the purpose of this facility is to house a linear accelerator and that area is surrounded by a concrete wall that takes up a significant area. So when we say that parking's provided at 1 per 300, we're also parking that concrete wall area around the linear accelerator. So in reality, there's plenty of parking on site. So leading me to the next portion of this is every commercial application is required to have a loading area or a loading zone. And in speaking with the applicant, the type of deliveries and the frequency of deliveries here, they felt did not necessitate a large loading area and they wanted to request consideration be given to allowing just a standard commercial parking space, a 10 by 20, to be used, to be designated for their loading area. Staff recommends approval of that. The town engineer has recommended approval of that and the planning board has also recommended approval of that, but of course, that is for your consideration today. Our code requires that 20% of the entire parking area be comprised of a permeable pavement, permeable surface. Based on this site plan, they need just a little bit over 1,000 square feet of permeable surface and they have over 3,000, so they are certainly compliant there. Buffering and landscaping, the I've laid out in your packet each type of buffer requirement, but there's a more significant buffer requirement on the front and rear yards. So here on 158, the requirement there is actually 15 feet of natural area and then a 10-foot wide buffer, but because of some drainage easements and utility easements running through here, they could not have that full 15-foot of natural area, so they have proposed their buffer yard, which is compliant on either side of the easements. Back here, adjacent to the residential area, the Moon Gate subdivision, it is the same scenario back there. They've provided a appropriate width of buffer here adjacent to the residential. To the north and south, those are both commercial properties, so there is not a requirement for buffering there. However, as I mentioned, up next, in order to accommodate the 15% of the total lot area being vegetated as well as the interior drive, interior islands and the parking lot, they had to fit some landscaping along here. So while that is not necessarily a required buffer, they have proposed a buffer yard through there. So all of that is detailed in your packet. I won't go through all of it, but they are compliant in terms of buffer yards, the planting of 15% of the lot area and the interior parking islands. For lighting, they have submitted a lighting plan and specifications for their light fixture. That is a full cutoff fixture. Originally, that information wasn't clear. It is a full cutoff fixture, so therefore, the lumens or the foot candles that were originally proposed are compliant, so the lighting plan is compliant. Village is a little bit different on signage. Signage actually has to go through the same review process as the site plan with both planning board and board of commissioners review. They are aware of this. They were not prepared at this point in time to present their signage, but they know that they will need to come back once that's finalized for board review. Included in your packet was a letter from Carolina Water Service saying that they are willing and able to serve the sanitary sewer facilities here. Stormwater management and traffic circulation have both been reviewed and approved by the town engineer and we do have an email with his comments included in your packet there. As always, it must comply with the fire prevention codes and Public Works has reviewed and approved the site plan as it's been proposed originally. We had noted three things that we wanted the applicant to look at prior to the board of commissioners' submittal. One was the landscaping and the lighting and then the consideration of reduction in space for the loading zone. All of those have been addressed with the board of commissioners' submittal, so staff at this time would recommend approval of the site plan as it's being presented. And additionally, the planning board at their September 19th meeting recommended approval of the site plan once those conditions had been met and at this time, those conditions have been met. Happy to answer any questions. We have Craig Leonard with the East Group available if you have questions of him and Kathleen Sanders with Quival has done some site work in the stormwater, so she's available if you have questions of her as well.
All right. Does the board have any questions of Ms. Wyatt?
I have one question. On heat two, you're opposed demolition of a parking area that's on the north boundary of that property right now and I've gone by that property on several occasions over the last couple of weeks and the urgent care center is using that as parking area now. In fact, it was full this morning with like urgent care center parking. Does this leave the urgent care center with enough parking for that facility?
Urgent Care does have the minimum required number of parking spaces on their site, not including what they're using offsite, but I don't think the intention was to eliminate any of the existing parking that's on site now. Mr. Leonard may be able to speak to that as well, but both facilities have the minimum number of required.
Individually, they have their own.
Yes, they do not have any shared agreement.
That was the only concern I had.
Commissioner Ratzenberger?
This is more an information request and you mentioned the protection around the accelerator and, you know, because this is only a site plan, but from the fuzzy little drawing of the interiors, I couldn't, is there a storage area in there also for any sort of radiological materials or supplies, a protected area?
Mr. Leonard could probably speak to that as well.
And that may be somebody else's answer. I'm just curious more than anything.
But actually, if you'll just wait until we get to your presentation, we can answer that question at that time. Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt before we? Anything else at all? Does the applicant have any questions for Ms. Wyatt before you begin your presentation? All right. Thank you very much. Unless you have anything else?
Thank you. Nope. Can I get it back to the site plan?
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, the applicant may present evidence in support of this application.
Hi, my name is Craig Leonard. I'm the architect for the project. I'm with the East Group and Kelly has presented it very, very well. I don't really have a whole lot to add as far as her technical presentation about the design. There are no other storage facilities, no nuclear atomic facilities here. I mean, it is, it's a linear accelerator, but it's not, you know, there's no cobalt or any kind of source associated with that. The concrete is there to contain the radiation that's emitted by the accelerator itself, but nothing else happens in the building outside of that vault. I will just take a few seconds to say, you can look at the site and tell that technically this was a very, very tough project to make everything fit there and we really do appreciate the collaboration with the town staff to help us figure out a way to do that that works for the people that we use the building and works well for the town. It's been a very good process for us.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Leonard?
Thank you for your questions.
Any questions at all? All right. Anything further, anything further from the applicant at this time? All right. Is there anyone else who has sworn that wishes to present evidence on this application? If so, this is your opportunity. If not, does the board wish to receive any further evidence on this application before you begin your deliberations? Yes, ma'am?
I do. I'd like to ask the engineer a couple of questions, please.
All right. Thank you, Ms.?
Mr. Ryan.
Oh, town engineer, I'm sorry.
Sorry, town engineer.
Mr. Ryan, you've already been sworn, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning, David.
Good morning.
I'm referencing an email from you to Kelly and Andy on September 15th of this year under stormwater management and three different bullets that talks about fill, volume of retention and infiltration control measures and it says have been determined to be in substantial compliance in each area. Does that mean it's 100% in compliance or does that mean there's flexibility in compliance? I'm concerned about the term substantial because it doesn't necessarily mean that it is 100% in compliance with what we require.
It is in full compliance.
Okay, then perhaps.
It's one of the engineer terms.
That's not a layman's term and it doesn't meet Webster's. I looked up Webster's dictionary a couple of times about the term substantial and my concern is I want to make sure that when it comes to stormwater that we are in total compliance.
Yes, and that's engineering terminology and basically, full compliance will be achieved once post constructions reflect the approved plans. There were numerous iterations that were done with the applicant's engineer on this specific application because of the recent rainfall events that have occurred this past summer. And so there were numerous tweaks that were made to the design in order to establish full compliance, but that is typical terminology that I use on the front end and then on the back end, we will establish full compliance once the facilities are constructed in accordance with the approved plans.
Okay, that's going to come up again and another one because stormwater seems to be something that we're all very concerned about at this point in time.
Can't nail our engineer shoes to the floor.
Well, mayors, I hate to say it, but I think everybody ought to be nailed to the floor when it comes to lots of more. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Ryan while he's here? Any questions from the applicant for Mr. Ryan? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the board wish to receive any other evidence? All right. If not, at this time, we will conclude the presentation of evidence on this proposed site plan and the board may begin its deliberations.
Any discussion? If not, do we have a motion?
No deliberation.
I'll second the approved site plan as presented. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, there being none, it's a order. I'd like to thank the United Health and the Outer Banks Hospital for locating this facility here. It's a great addition to our community and we're concerned and appreciate you bringing this facility here. Thank you very much. This time, the board's going to take a five-minute recess and we'll be back at that at about 10 after. Let's return to item F1. I think Andy has made that revision that we requested in the ordinance. Cover that with us, Andy.
Yes, sir. It's highlighted in yellow in both of those sections and essentially, we took what was in our multifamily ordinance and overwritten what was already there. So you can see that the strike through is there and if you scroll down a little bit more, Roberta, down the other way. There it is right there. So essentially, it replaces the first sentence and it clearly says that the project has to meet the North Carolina Building and Fire Prevention Code and also shall be sprinkler protected in accordance with Section 20, which is a special section we have in our code dealing with sprinkler protection for multifamily structures. And years ago, the town got special legislation to allow the town to regulate multifamily structures and have them sprinkler protected. I think since that time, the building code and fire code have been updated to require it, but we had that in place prior to that, so that's the language.
Okay. All right. That's good. Thank you. Any questions, Andy? Any discussion?
Yeah, since this was a joint project among staff, planning board and the applicant, is everybody now happy?
Is the applicant's engineer still here?
I'm happy.
I didn't ask that.
Mark is okay with it. The particular project that they're working on, the building is fully sprinkler protected, so.
It's already sprinkled.
Right, yeah. And I think it does, it's covered by the code. Kevin, chief, was showing that to me just a minute ago, but this is sort of makes it clear.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt zoning ordinance text amendment as amended?
I'll update my earlier motions to acknowledge that this satisfies the intent of what I recommended building us on. Make a motion and we approve as revised.
Okay. There's second to that.
Second.
Motion made, second, discussion on the motion. If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, there being none, it's a order. Next item is a quasi judicial hearing on consideration of a site plan submitted by Boulder Engineering to oversee the construction of a 35,962 square foot grocery store. Let me have everybody sworn for that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for the record, I'd like to, I'd like to go through my introductory remarks and then we'll have this for the record of this proceeding as well. So when considering an application for a site plan, So, when considering an application for a site plan approval under Town Code Section 48-524, the Board of Commissioners sits as a quasi judicial body. This means that the board's decision must be based on certain requirements, including the decision must be based on competent material and substantial evidence. The critical facts used to determine the outcome of this hearing must be based on sworn statements made by witnesses during the proceeding. While you may be presented during this proceeding with copies of uns sworn statements, contained letters, emails, and the like, such uns sworn evidence can only be used to corroborate or supplement other sworn evidence that's presented. Unsworn evidence, such as letters or emails, can never be used as the sole basis for your decision. The applicant has the right to cross-examine witnesses and offer rebuttal evidence, and the procedures set forth in the ordinance must be followed. In addition, when the board sits as a quasi judicial body to decide this type of application, it is imperative that no member be involved in the deliberations who has a conflict whereby that person would potentially be something other than an impartial decision maker. Impermissible conflicts include, but are not limited to: One, a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing that is not subject to change; Two, undisclosed ex parte communications; Three, a close familial, business, or other associational relationship with anyone affected by this application; Four, a direct financial interest in the outcome of the application. Of course, previously undisclosed ex parte communications, which have not caused you to develop a fixed opinion, may be cured through the disclosure of the facts or information obtained on the record. If any of the other situations are applicable to any of the members of the board, that member should be recused from participation in the procedure by a vote of the remaining members of council. So, at this time, I ask whether anyone has a conflict which would potentially make you something other than an impartial decision maker, or have you received any undisclosed communications or information which you would like to disclose at this time? Yes, Commissioner?
Only that some of the neighbors have asked what will happen to the oak trees.
Okay. Anything about those communications that would cause you to be anything other than an impartial decision maker?
No.
All right. Anyone else?
I simply note that I'm a fairly frequent... My wife and I are fairly frequent visitors to Kelly's restaurant, and have sometimes been known to be huddled in the back booth with him, talking about whatever, but none of that has to do with this, and it doesn't influence my ability to be neutral.
So, you'll still be able to be fair and impartial?
Right.
And have no predetermined position or decision to reach on this matter? All right, thank you, Mr. Ratzelbert. Anyone else? Okay. The evidence that the board considers on this matter must be provided by sworn witnesses, so at this time, I will ask that those who will present evidence in connection with this application, if you will please, approach the town clerk so that she may administer the oath. All right, we'll begin this proceeding with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. So, as you mentioned, this is a site plan review. It's been submitted by Boulder Engineering, and the request is to construct a 35,962 square foot retail grocery store on parcels 2316 and 2300 South Croatan Highway. I've gone ahead and put the site plan up on the projector, but essentially, I'm sure everyone is familiar, but... So, this is the existing features. So, this is Kelly's restaurant, and then, this is Kelly Professional Center. So, both of these parcels will be utilized in the development of the project for commercial applications. It is not required that the lots be recombined. As long as it's under one development plan, there can be two underlying lots there. So, this is located in the C2 zoning district, and retail grocery store or food store is listed as a permitted use within this district. As I mentioned in the previous review, lot coverage is going to be 55% allowable lot coverage on the site, and proposed lot coverage here is 54.6% lot coverage. So, it is very close, but it is compliant. Building height in this area is maximum 35 feet. Because of the size of the building, it was not feasible to have pitched roof within 812, so they have to stay at 35 feet, and they are proposed exactly at 35 feet. So, we always require a height certification, but in light of them being right at 35, we want to go ahead and ask for a height cert at framing as soon as possible, just to ensure that they're compliant at the earliest possible time. In terms of architectural design, let's see if I can pull up the architectural design. I apologize for the delay. Hopefully, this was the right link. It was. Okay. So, as you know, within the town, there's two methods of architectural compliance. One is through the residential design manual, and the other one is through the alternative commercial design criteria. And again, that is the path that the applicant has chosen to gain compliance with. That section of the code, it gets some specific criteria that has to be met in order to meet the alternative design. The first is that all visible wall siding materials are composed of brick and stucco. There's a couple of other options, but as you can see, outside of the window areas, the majority of this structure is composed of brick and stucco. Windows compose more than 10%, but less than 40% on each building vertical wall area. The front building facade does incorporate a porch. Here's the easiest way to see that. You can see this porch here. It's a little bit different than what's required residentially. It doesn't speak to railings and column trim and that type of thing. It just speaks to the depth of the porch, it having a roof, and the roof being at a certain pitch, which this does meet. The applicant has provided a roof facade on all four sides, and in each instance... Sorry. In each instance, they have gone ahead and provided a roof variation as necessary. You can see here, they have their dormers at appropriate intervals, down here as well. At the time of the planning board meeting, a roof variation was not proposed on this elevation, but coming to the Board of Commissioners, this has now been provided, so that is compliant. And as you can see, the dormers along this facade. So, that is compliant as well. They've acknowledged that the rooftop equipment will be shielded from view and from the street right-of-way. That's indicated here in this area. So, based upon that, the proposal is compliant with the alternative architectural design criteria. In terms of parking, required parking for the project is provided in compliance with the retail standard of one space per 250 square feet of gross floor area, plus one for each employee. That requires 144 parking spaces. They anticipate 10 employees, so that 10 additional parking spaces would bring them up to required 154 parking spaces. They have proposed 160 parking spaces. They've proposed more. We understand that is a corporate standard to have more than a minimum required. It might be beneficial to pop back here to the site plan at this point. Okay, so, just as with the last application, there's a requirement that 20% of the total parking area be provided in a permeable surface. And as you can see, a large portion of this parking area is provided in a permeable surface. They're at almost 90% in permeable pavement surfaces here. So, they certainly meet that requirement. For buffering and landscaping, again, any lot adjacent to US 158 essentially has to meet two standards. It has to have a 15-foot natural area, and then, a 10-foot wide vegetative buffer beyond that. What is proposed here, I think we actually have an updated landscape plan. It is in your packet. We can try to move to that. But they have met that requirement. In order to comply with the stormwater and have the most efficient stormwater management plan, the applicant did work with our town engineer. It resulted in a portion of the stormwater measures encroaching into that 15-foot natural area, but we did feel that that was an appropriate encroachment to ensure that we have proper stormwater. Along the north side... I am just going to have to go to the landscape plan, I think. Sorry. Along the north boundary, there's two different buffering requirements imposed here. Directly across the street, this is developed commercially, and so, all that's required there is a five-foot wide buffer yard C, but as you move through here, this is residential zoning district, so there's an increased buffer requirement there. That's actually a required 25-foot wide buffer yard G with two rows of compliant plantings. So, as you can see, the buffer yard C here has certainly been met, and the buffer yard G in this area, and compliant with, has also been met. Now that we have the landscape plan up, you can also see how they have met the buffer yard adjacent to 158. Along the south property line, it's a very similar situation. You have commercial zoning adjacent here, residential zoning back here. So, they've gone ahead and shown the buffer yard C in this area, which does comply, and provided the buffer yard G in the rear, adjacent to the residential areas. So, they do have a compliant buffer yard there. The entirety of the adjoining properties along the rear property line, that is R2, and so, they do have to provide that buffer yard G, the 25-foot wide buffer, for the entirety of the rear yard property line, which they have shown. Open space preservation, you are required by the Town Code to do one of two things, or you can use a combination, but you need to preserve 10% of existing natural mature vegetation on site. Or if you do not do that, you have to plant 15% of the total lot area. And they are coming in using a combination of that, as I've outlined in your staff report. You can see where they have proposed to preserve some existing vegetation. These areas that are... They have a bubble around them. Those are all areas of preserved vegetation. There's a large piece here. There's several areas here along the south where they are proposing to preserve existing vegetation. Here's an area as well. So, they are incorporating some areas of preserved vegetation. They've done the calculation on that, and approximately 9.3% of the lot area is being preserved. So, when you look at the Town Code, there's a chart that essentially says if you're preserving this amount, you must provide this amount. And using that chart, they would need to provide 5.25% of the lot area in new plantings, and they've indicated with all of the new plantings included, 5.6% of additional vegetation. So, this... The preservation of landscaping, or the 15%, does not include your required buffers. So, it looks like there's significantly more than 5.6 planted, and there is, but that 5.6 is exclusive of the required buffer. So, they are compliant in that regard. We've noted in the staff report that there are several large stands of oak trees and existing vegetation. They have incorporated some of that, but staff would like to see them attempt to incorporate more of that existing vegetation. Andy is very familiar with the existing vegetation out there, so more information is needed on that. He can provide that. We did note in the application, the areas that we felt there could be more preservation. Retaining trees along the south side of the building by shortening up the stormwater retention area, they have accommodated that. They have done that. Retain trees along the south side of the driveway entrance that are not shown on the plan, since they are less than six inches in diameter. These trees are currently very prominent to the site and provide a canopy and screening from US 158. The applicant has indicated that it is their intent, I believe, to keep those trees as well. Retain trees adjacent to the Carolinian Circle entrance, particularly the 24-inch live oak to the west. This tree is located in here approximately. We would have to go back to the grading plan to see it, but I believe that's its approximate location. The applicant has been in discussion with the town engineer about some stormwater measures and pipes and additional things that may prevent them from keeping that tree, but potentially Andy or the town engineer could speak more to that. Lastly, retaining a cluster of oaks in the vicinity of the proposed landscape island northeast of the existing restaurant building. Staff has suggested enlarging the interior island northeast of the... And incorporating a portion of the stand of trees into the island. We do acknowledge that in doing so, you would likely have to limb up the live oaks since they are very low lying, but this is... I believe it's right in here, the stand. So, staff felt like this interior parking island could potentially be enlarged to save that stand of trees. It's my understanding that they have... The applicant has not shown that or expressed an interest in trying to do that at this point, but we would still like for consideration to be given to that. As far as the interior parking lot landscaping, they, again, they could meet that through new plantings or preserved plantings, and they have shown their interior island, parking lot island landscaping in new plantings. It does meet the requirement. In terms of lighting, the proposed light fixture within the parking lot has been determined to be a full cutoff fixture, so just as in the last application we had. They are allowed to go up to 10-foot candles or lumens of light within the parking area, and in review of their lighting plan, they are now compliant with that. No signage has been proposed at this time, but of course, when it is, it will have to go through zoning and building review prior to installation. The applicant has submitted their application for subject capacity to the Dare County Health Department. However, at the time that the staff report went out, we did not have that approval, and I'm not sure if we have it at this time. I think I'm sensing from the applicant that we don't have it just yet. Stormwater management and traffic circulation have been reviewed and approved by the town engineer, and his comments are included in an email correspondence in your packet dated As far as the fire department review, they find it compliant at this time and just reinforce that moving forward, the North Carolina Fire Prevention Codes must be met. And the Public Works Department has reviewed and approved the proposed site plan as it's been presented. Staff finds that the applicant has addressed the concerns previously noted by planning staff and the planning board as it relates to just delineating the areas of preserved vegetation versus the new vegetation. vegetation versus the new vegetation, and they have provided the additional information on the lighting fixture. While the applicant has incorporated the preservation of two additional trees beyond their original proposal, staff continues to submit that consideration should be given to preserving more of the existing vegetation on site. Additionally, staff would also recommend the board consider modifying the traffic control map to make Carolinian Circle a right-only configuration. This is due to the number of driveways and potential conflicts directly to the north of the intersection, and that might be something deputy town manager Andy Garment or account engineer Dave Ryan can speak to. The planning board, at their September 19 meeting, voted unanimously to recommend approval of the site plan with the same concerns as staff had noted. So, again, all of those have been met with the exception of just requesting that more consideration be given to preservation of the landscaping on site. And the planning board did recommend that the traffic control map be amended. So, I am happy to answer any questions that you may have. Wyatt Bone with Bowler Engineering is here on behalf of the applicant. Michael Kazak is the architect who worked on the architectural design. I see them both in the audience, and I'm sure they're happy to answer any questions you have.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Yes, Commissioner Kehoe.
Kelly, you mentioned not recombining the lots. Typically, in the past, we've always encouraged people to recombine the lots. Is there any particular obstacle to recombining the lots?
I don't see any obstacle to it. For residential properties, we certainly require it. For commercial, it is optional, but there's no, there would be no concern with combining these two lots.
The other thing, you brought up the landscaping, and I liked staff's recommendation about preserving, because we're like, the live oak is a town tree. We ought to be encouraging preservation, not cutting them out. Anything we can do to save live oaks, we ought to be trying to do that as well. Question I had is if we can find, that was on site plan C 2.0, I have a note in there, and it was for the parking lot, and it says parking lot ponding. It's over on the, yes. We're up in the upper, right. But I just am concerned about, does that mean that we're going to have flooded parking lots? Is that part of the stormwater plan, have that? I'm sorry. Okay. And the other thing, in the unloading area where the trucks would unload, that is a slanted, typically the trucks are parked down an incline, so that when they unload, it goes straight onto a level. Does it show a pump to pump out all the standing water that would be there? Okay, just want to make sure, because that's been a bone of contention with some other stores, that they don't really want to pump out that water, and standing water's not healthy. Or it does?
Yes.
Want to make sure that's on the record that it does.
You will make sure.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mayor Kehoe. The recommendation for right turn only out of Carolinian Circle, driftwood is, not that far away, there is any consideration for doing the same with that, which is across the street. Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's because I can't get close enough. I asked the question, is there any consideration for also making driftwood, I think it's driftwood, right turn only, which is essentially really close to across the street. Just for safety reasons.
I am not familiar with that, but the town engineer may have more information on that as well.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Well, I want to, since Mayor Pro-Tim did that, I want to piggyback on that. And I've been through all the trees and the plants and this and that, but there's going to be a center exit from the store on the 158. That's going to, so basically, folks on Oak Knoll can almost give up going north, because the suicide lane's going to be full of folks coming up from the south. Since there's no light, the only turn into the store from the south is the suicide lane. There's three drives across the street, Christmas Shop, a mortgage, and Crab Shack there that tend to contribute to the traffic in the suicide lane. Driftwood, which I didn't really consider because they're further up, but they do also. If we're going to dump all of Carolinian South, then we're adding more traffic in front to that center store entrance. And it's unlikely, admittedly, Kelly's Restaurant is here now, but it's not a 20, it's not a high volume, except in the evening, you know, that kind of thing. Seems like we're creating a lot of problems here, and if nothing else, can we address any requests into DOT for their consideration? I mean, I don't even see a turn lane coming down from the north to help mitigate some of the issues at the front of the store there. So, we have a lot going on in front of that store there, and it concerns me more than anything else, is this whole combination of traffic. And just to follow on with that, while we're getting there, what do the folks in Carolinian Circle and Oak Knoll, the residents, think about these turning issues? I haven't seen anybody talk about what the residents think about Carolinian Circle. And I understand the reason, because of the volume that cook them out of Lidl on the Carolinian Circle, that increases the volume of traffic on there. So, I understand all that, but I'm very concerned about the traffic issues with this.
I know the town engineer, and so this is like the first thing I've diverted to him, I know, but I know he has been in conversation with the DOT traffic engineer, so he may have some things to add to that conversation.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt?
I just had one, and this is on drawing three going over, and I have preserved tree canopy, and they've done a pretty good job of allowing preserved tree canopies. The only concern I have is north of the view entrance way, there is a, there is a area of trees there that look like they're going to be preserved, but they're not designated as preserving the tree canopy. I know they probably have to be Trump actions. Is that the reason they're not designated on this drawing, or is that an oversight?
Well, those are certainly going to be preserved. This packet of information went out prior to a revision, and that one revision was delineating that this is to be preserved.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Commissioner Kehoe?
Hello, ma'am.
If you can, I'm sorry, ma'am.
We have no space. There's no way to stretch out. On, see, it talks about TBR on some live oaks on the north side. Does that mean to be removed? Are those some of the trees that you're talking about wanting to preserve?
Yes, I believe so. You can see here, the highlighted is where they're proposing to preserve some vegetation, but there is a pretty significant tree in this area that staff would like to see retained that is not shown to be.
That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, 24-inch.
Yes, a pretty big caliber tree.
24 inches, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's hugely beautiful, as a matter of fact. Okay. So, all right, that's one of the ones that I was, just want to make sure.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt, while she's here? Does the applicant have any questions before you make your presentation? Do you have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? All right, thank you very much. It may be helpful to hear from engineer, town engineer Dave Ryan, to answer some of the other questions that the board was raising with what he goes to the applicant. So, if you'll come and present evidence for the board's consideration, particularly on those various questions that Kelly deferred to you.
All right. Good morning again. All right, this planning process has gone on for a year plus, and our first concern from a staff perspective was external traffic circulation, each of which the board members has mentioned during the course of their comments. Staff had recommended a traffic impact study at that point, which would go ahead and look at the various conditions surrounding not only the existing traffic patterns, base conditions, background conditions, safety information, traffic volumes, and highway capacity analysis. The applicant, in turn, looked to a traffic engineering consultant that contacted DOT to see if DOT was going to warrant a traffic impact study for this application. It was determined by DOT that this application did not require that level of study and analysis. The town does not have any prescriptive requirements for a traffic impact study above and beyond what DOT requires. A lot of those things could have been flushed out at that time, but again, we didn't have the teeth within our ordinance to pursue that anymore, other than a recommendation, not a requirement on our part. One of the other things that was mentioned was a deceleration lane from the north for the, actually for the southbound traffic to gain access to the main entrance of the site. That, again, was another recommendation, but in review of the DOT criteria for a full movement deceleration lane, the geometry did not work out with the separation distance from Carolinian Circle to the location of the main entrance drive. The other recommendation that staff had was for the main entrance to be right turn only. Again, that was overruled by DOT and the division traffic engineer, who was going to go ahead and permit a full movement driveway at that location. Staff had concerns. Those concerns were overruled by DOT, and it follows along with DOT's policy on street and driveway access to NC DOT highways. We've thought about internally maybe reviewing our ordinance to see what we can do to go ahead and strengthen that up, but for this particular application, did not have the mechanism in order to try to apply any prescriptive requirements as it pertains to external traffic circulation for this application.
So, the answer is, and I'm paraphrasing all of this, that we just go ahead and we'll do this and let DOT sort it out whenever they get around to the car study, because the problem's not going to go away, whether they put islands or suicide lanes or anything else in there.
That is correct. It's the DOT corridor that they're responsible for maintaining and managing, and so ultimately, they made the call in this specific instance. Now, one improvement that they mentioned in comparison to the existing driveway location in its proximity to West Oak Knoll, which currently does not meet their standards, they have now basically centered the main driveway in between Carolinian Circle and West Oak Knoll, so that is somewhat of an improvement, but does not address all the concerns of the board as far as ingress and egress to this site.
Thank you for your information. I appreciate that.
And your efforts.
And as far as the right turn only from Carolinian Circle, that will be a separate motion, and I can give information on that right now, or we can go ahead and talk about that separately when that's to be considered.
Talk about it later.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Talk about it later during this discussion?
After, it'd be the next item for consideration.
Well, I have an additional question.
Go right ahead.
Was right turn only out of Carolinian Circle a DOT decision or a town decision?
Both. We had received concurrence from DOT on that as well.
Was there any consideration of driftwood across the street?
We had not discussed that as part of this application, though.
If my memory serves me, I know we've had, I think, at least one fatality in this past. I know we've at least had a couple of pretty serious accidents there, so it seems like on this highway with what is called the suicide lane, at same proximity to Satterfield and a light, that both sides of this highway would be addressed at the same time. That's in my head.
Yeah, we can go ahead and discuss that in greater detail when we talk about the right turn.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions for Mr. Ryan? Does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Ryan? All right. Thank you, Dave. All right, at this time, the applicant may present evidence in support of this application. If you please approach the podium and present any evidence that you wish to present in support of the application. If you'll please start off by telling us who you are, too.
Good morning. My name is Wyatt Bone. I'm the civil engineer record for this project. This is Michael Kazak. He's the architect record for this project. I've got a list here of some of y'all's questions. Would you like for me to answer this first, or perhaps field some more?
Might be helpful to go ahead and answer those questions first.
Okay. So, we've worked with town staff pretty extensively on stormwater. This site meets the town requirement of 4.3 inches detained on site, which is in excess of what's happening with the present site right now, so there will be an improvement to the stormwater situation on this site. We're also preserving existing vegetation, as Kelly noted. There was a request to save vegetation south of the entrance. That vegetation is being impacted to put in extra stormwater storage, so it's also not subject to regulation by the code because it's too small, smaller than six inches. Vegetation here at the corner of the building, we've preserved a couple of extra trees down there. The town code does have accommodation to remove trees if they're in direct conflict with the building foundation. This corner of the building here has a rather large foundation that would impact some of the trees in this area. We've made a note to try and preserve trees where possible beyond the ones that we're calling for being saved absolutely. We're of the opinion some of these trees may be able to be saved, but we don't want to go on the record saying that they will, so we only certified that the ones depicted with the hatching can be saved. So, the intent here, through negotiations with Andy, was that we'd have a meeting at the beginning of the project with the GC to discuss the trees on site and how we can possibly save them. So, it's kind of a joint effort between us, the town, and then the future GC on this Kelly made note of the trees here in front of the store and the desire to save them. Our client, they very much want to have a clear view corridor, and we are retaining some trees up here at the entrance on the Carolinian, but we would like to remove these trees because they obscured from the store. Furthermore, they impact our parking count. It would cause us to lose an additional four parking spaces. It's our client's desire to maintain 160 parking spaces for their operation. Kelly made reference to the septic permit. It has not yet been approved, but it has been submitted. Ms. Kehoe, you made reference to recombining the lots. We don't have any intention to recombine, but it's certainly not a problem to. It wouldn't impact any of our operations. You had made reference also to parking lot ponding, and I think that might be an issue where the electronic depiction of the plans for the existing conditions showed a proposed layer on the existing conditions. Nonetheless, we are proposing to pond water in the parking lot, right in this middle bay right here. Sorry. This middle bay right here, it'll be inverted, so that in certain storm events, when water This middle bay right here, it'll be inverted so that in certain storm events, when water stages up in the on-site infiltration basins, water will pond there. This is allowed per town code. You're allowed to infringe into parking areas for 20% of your stormwater storage, so this is in accordance with the town code, and it further helps us meet the 4.3-inch retention on-site. You'd made reference also to a sump pump in the loading dock area. We are calling for dual duplex, or duplex pumps, which will run on a float switch and discharge the water to the infiltration basin at the rear of the site. I think David adequately responded to the right turn off of Carolinian. If there's anything else on that, I'm happy to discuss it. That was not a desire of ours. It was the DOT and the town, so we're happy to accommodate it. I think David also closed the loop on DOT and their reviewing of this plan. The trees off the entrance here, Carolinian, that is a nice tree. We were proposing to preserve it, however, it's been the request of town staff to place a pipe under this entrance for future stormwater improvements, which I understand are being studied now, and they requested that as part of our project, while we're in here working, we go ahead and put a pipe in. It doesn't serve any function for our site. It doesn't provide any type of drainage for our site or the surrounding area. However, we're of the opinion installing this pipe is going to impact that tree such that it cannot be preserved. That tree in particular is one that we added this note for, for the general contractor to discuss this with us and then also the town. If we can get any type of relief on that drainage pipe, I think we have a better chance of saving that tree. And there was a question also about TBR on the trees. That does mean to be removed, so that was correct. I think that was all the questions I had taken down. Do you have any further questions?
Mr. Rutherford? Yes, sir.
Okay.
You can approach the mic, just make sure we catch your comments.
My voice carries, I think. Town standard says 155 parking spaces, I think, and you all have got 10, you know, including the 10 you wanted for employees, so why are we hung up on four parking spaces? Tell me what the use of those four parking spaces are, other than to meet a piece of paperwork from the store itself.
It's been a request of our client to provide these parking spaces. It's within the confines of the code. We haven't exceeded the code requirements, so we always try and execute our client's desires within the town's requirements.
We've kind of had some tree desires in there. I just hate getting hung up over four parking spaces that apparently are unnecessary. It's okay. Just a thought, if we move forward or not.
Other questions for Mr. Dunn?
On strike C 5.0, you have a lot of tree protection fencing that is in excess of what you show on the landscaping plan here, where you intend to keep trees, which is the controlling drawing, is where we have protective fencing, the controlling drawing, or is it C 3, the controlling drawing?
They should match. In the event they don't, the more restricted one will.
Okay. Let's see, 5.0, if we're restricted.
Just a comment, and I know we're going to discuss the right turn only from Carolinian subsequently, but it appears to me that if we implement right turn only from Carolinian, it's going to divert more traffic southward where we have left turn coming out of the main entrance. So it seems to me like it's exacerbating the traffic conflict. Just a comment for consideration later.
Any other questions for Mr. Dunn? Any further presentation from the applicant?
No, I just want to say thank you for having us here. It's been a good experience working with the town, and I think we've made a lot of progress to get this plan we have today, and looking forward to being here.
All right. Mr. Kazak, anything?
Thank you, sir. Hello and good afternoon, everybody. Mr. Mayor, Board of Commissioners, we're humbled and honored to be able to go and present these, the plans, as well as architectural elevations in front of you. For the record, as you go and show in the PowerPoint presentation or slide, we have the architectural elevations that we can go ahead and discuss, should you have any questions. This stated before, this has been over a year process that we've been going and working together to develop the plan that we have in front of us. Throughout this year process, we've made, Wyatt and I believe, eight site visits out here to Nagshead. We've had two technical review committing meetings, and we also met with the planning commission, as well as went through the variance process. So working together, just wanted to go and state that it has been, it has not been in a vacuum. This has been, and a lot of feedback in between the town planning staff, the owner, the architect and engineer, and we're happy, we're proud of the information we've played before you and happy to accommodate and comment. Is there any questions in regard to the building or architectural elevations in particular?
Any questions for Mr. Kazak?
I don't have any. I think it was very well done. Consider we'll start.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your. Any other, does the applicant wish to present any other evidence at this time?
We cannot.
Is there anyone else who wishes to present evidence who was sworn at the beginning of the proceeding? Does the board wish to receive any further evidence or have any other questions, either for the applicant's representatives or for staff? If so, this is the time to receive it. Yes, Ms. Kahoon?
Not sure which staff member needs to answer the question, but I have a question, the pipe versus the 24-inch oak. Who can answer the question?
I believe Ms. Wyatt is deferring to Mr. Ryan. Wisely.
One of the things that we've seen recently, especially in this area, is significant flooding associated back in the Carolinian subdivision. As per our code, chapter 36 requires at least a minimum of an 18-inch driveway culvert pipe below commercial applications, and in discussing this with the applicant, it doesn't have to be in a particular alignment. We've talked about several different alignments that we could potentially work around this tree, but this could be part of a solution to the Carolinian subdivision for future drainage improvements. That's why we wanted to go ahead and include that in this plan if we were to move forward in the future, to provide some drainage relief to that area.
Okay. My next question for you, then, when in the future are you planning to utilize this pipe, and will it still be of sufficient quality by the time you get to it?
It could be part of the master planning that we're in progress right now with, so we'll be looking at all avenues as far as improvements to that area, and that's on our priority list to review and plan for.
Okay. Again, my question would be, when in the future is this pipe going to be utilized? Are we talking 10 years down the road, 15 years down the road, next CIP of five years, or?
It's, right now, it's planned to be included in the 10-year CIP plan that is in the process of being.
We're looking at at least 10 years down the road.
10 years, but that would be the time limit.
And you can use an 18-inch diameter, but you want a 24, is that correct? Or 20, 24? 24?
An 18-inch diameter is the minimum, as noted in chapter 36 of our code.
And you're asking for, I'm getting confused between a 24-inch oak and the diameter of the pipe.
Really, what it's hard and difficult to determine at this point is the root structure that's underground that's supporting that tree, and so we've asked the applicant to go ahead and put a field note on there with the contractor to consult with the town to see what available options are to realign that pipe in order to retain that oak tree.
Okay, so theoretically, we could end up with the pipe and the tree.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And a couple other points of clarification. You had mentioned about the ponding, and I think Wyatt discussed that, ponding in the parking lot. We had gone through numerous iterations with stormwater volume requirements on this site. I think several of the iterations did not have the stormwater ponding, but in an effort to save some of the landscaping that was contained within the stormwater basins, had to revert back to every available opportunity for stormwater storage. And so there's provision within our code, I think it's 34 or 5, that permits 20% of ponding only within the parking stalls. It cannot be contained within the parking drive aisles or within the handicap stalls, so that is in accordance with our code.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Any other questions for Dave while he's here? Mr. Mayor?
I don't have any.
All right. Does the board wish to receive any further evidence in response to this application? Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. Did the applicant have any questions for Mr. Ryan in response to his presentation? So does the board wish to receive any other evidence?
I would like to go through any landowners or citizens from adjoining properties here that would like to make any comments at this time.
They would have to be sworn, but the board, if the board wishes to receive that, you can allow that. Anyone who wishes to provide evidence regarding this application would need to approach the clerk and receive the oath.
I reside at 436 Philadelton Drive. I own five adjacent properties, and I approve the property. And three of them are, three of them are in actual contact, two of them are in actual contact with the property, and one's across the street, and one, two are at the end of Cajun Tuna Court, which we developed. I'm the one that's developed the drive from US 158 back to Carolinian Circle because of the road was probably until, we developed the property in 1985, probably until the early 90s, it was a dirt road, and dirt roads get legs. The dirt roads started, instead of going like that, it started going over like that and that, and all of a sudden, the dirt roads don't stay in the 15, 16-foot, they start beginning to grow. And we initiated and began to work with the property owners in Carolinian Circle at that time to put the street in and began to do it. The things about consideration, and I'm not the developer, so, but there are many trees that you talk about that are really not safeable because there are two types of live oaks. Probably being the, probably the largest commercial owner of live oaks on the Outer Banks, or at least in Nagshead, I will take, I will state that I feel that I am and yet to be contradicted, but there are two. There are ones that grow up and there are ones that grow out. Okay? And I will tell you that in the 32 years that I've owned the property, we have removed some trees, we have paved some lots, we have tore some trees, and we have found that the ones that have lived and done better are the ones that have grown after the parking lot was already, that were there, the parking lot was there that we put in afterwards in the trees. The one that was in that curve that we're in is in conversation was essentially not anything 32 years ago. It has grown, and so I think that planting trees is probably a lot better answer of getting what you want as opposed to trying to work around some existing. If you go and look, I can show you on a map approximately, I got some trees that probably got some pretty good girth, but they didn't grow up. They grew out, and they were so low to the ground that if you began to trim them, because they would probably go from me to the end of that table before the tree got to do it. And the reason they haven't been trimmed is because we've worried about them because of having a bar, and in my situation, we keep them trimmed at this height, about six foot, well, six foot will be there, in about 5'9". So we use that to begin to do them. So they look like great trees, they're very impressive, but they're sprawl. It's not, you couldn't, if you saved them, you'd have a bunch of nubs. That's just myself, but I've conferred with my business partner in the back, and she said that she thinks that the lot that we're happy with what's done, and we're happy with all the work that the engineering firm and the architect have done to meet the things, and we've had extensive discussions with them, and we feel that they're doing a good job, and I probably own more adjacent property than anybody else. Any questions? Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mike, if you would wait one second. Does the applicant have any questions for Mr. Dunn? Thank you very much.
And we have, there was, we have worked extensively, and I believe the town manager has been in attendance to meetings with people at both subdivisions, Carolinian Circle and Nagshead Pond, and I will say that Carolinian Circle wouldn't be developed today if it wasn't for myself. Wouldn't you say that? There wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a hard road in there, would there be? Because of our efforts to try to improve that subdivision in cooperation with three different town managers, and Mr. Auburn did a great job of assisting, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Does anyone else wish to present evidence that has been offered the opportunity by Mayor?
I would like to ask the planning board chair if he has any additional input.
Yes, sir.
All of the political concerns that the county has had, you had expressed that there is a right stake.
All right. This is the last chance for any further evidence. Is there anybody else who wishes to offer evidence? If not, at this time, we will conclude this proceeding, and the board may begin its deliberations on the proposed site plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wyatt. End of discussion. If not, then we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the, I'll second it.
Motion's been made to approve the site plan, as our second to that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. End of discussion on the motion.
Would the maker of the motion agree to a friendly amendment such as enlarging the island to preserve those trees in the island, not, I'm not talking about on the edge of the property, but within the island as staff had pointed out?
Yes.
Would the secondor agree to that friendly amendment?
I'd like to ask you a question. Would that affect the number of parking spaces that have been requested?
I believe it would.
Right.
It could, possibly, but it would not reduce them beyond the required number.
So if this were incorporated in the motion and approved, would that be a condition now that we're putting on the applicant to reduce those parking spaces? Is that the way this would all work?
It possibly could.
Okay. Understand. I'm agreeable to that.
You both would accept that friendly amendment, that the trees, the island be enlarged to preserve those trees? Thank you.
I recommend, Ms. Kahoon, that you go ahead and make a motion to amend the motion to add that, and officially add it to our.
Then I'll make a motion to amend the original motion to enlarge the island in question to preserve those trees that staff had recommended.
Our second to that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion's made and seconded. End of discussion on the amendment to the motion.
We've reached a point in this process where we have town standards, and we have the applicant's standard, and we're now quibbling over four parking. And I brought it up. It annoys me that that's, and oh, by the way, we also have DOT standards, which don't appear to be concerned with traffic flow or safety or anything else, but that's where we are. And yes, I brought up four parking spaces and trees and this and that, that's just my frustration with people taking stands here and there and on everything else. But I'm just not sure that it's worth interrupting this process over the parking island, which may not be the best place to preserve trees. I don't know that I'm just willing to let go. It's like I'm gonna have to let that front entrance go because there's no way to change it other than by simply not doing it at all. We need...
Any further discussion on the amendment?
I have a question for our attorney. Does this, I believe, change the process other than perhaps losing a couple of parking spaces to inhibit the process?
It doesn't change, no, but it would simply be approving the application with a specific requirement, which is allowed by the code.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Would it be possible to ask our town engineer for any additional information regarding this motion?
Yes.
Okay.
We would need to reopen the public hearing in order to receive any further evidence, but we can do that. The board's authorized to do that in order to receive additional evidence on that issue.
Do you desire to throw that forward? Okay, let's reopen it.
All right, at this time, we'll reopen the proceeding to receive evidence regarding this application. Mr. Ryan, if you would come and answer questions.
I'm all for preserving as many of the trees as possible. I think there's a great stand of trees on this area. But my question, on this particular clump of trees, are these the sprawl ones? How far out do they go? Can they be pruned back so that it doesn't go beyond this island? You know, how would all that work? All I know is that there's some trees there, but I don't know what it would be like.
Okay, so the island that we're referring to is right here. And so a lot of that is really going to be due to field investigation. It's hard to determine right now what that underground spread is of that root structure. And so there will have to be a field call depending on the spread of that root structure and how far, how expansive it is into either the drive aisle or back to the west into those parking stalls.
So if we put this condition on it, it still may not even be feasible to save these trees?
There is a potential.
So could I ask the attorney then, what would happen then?
Well, the trees may not survive, but you'd still have the island. You'd have the configuration of the island. Now, if the island served no purpose, the applicant or the owner could always make an application to amend the site plan, which would require consideration going back through the process.
Could it be to the maximum extent practicable or feasible depending upon existing site conditions at the time of construction? Would that make sense?
Yeah, the board could take, could impose that type of condition.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
Mayor Proton?
Does that require an amendment to the amended motion?
Yeah, probably so. I think you ought to make that condition specific, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think the town clerk would appreciate that. Any other questions for Mr. Ryan from the board? Any questions from the applicant on this evidence that he's presented? You may, you may, you may add rebuttal evidence to that, yes, sir.
One thing we haven't discussed is the changing of grading around that island. To maintain those trees, you would have to have the surrounding grade be at existing grade. There is a small amount of fill being placed in this area. Typically, trees do not do well once you place fill over their root mats. So I understand the desire to preserve this tree, but it seems like, in my opinion, if we maintain the drainage pattern that we have, there's a potential that this tree will die from the fill being placed around it.
Is it a tree or, I'm not talking about the one on the side?
I don't have the plan that shows, I believe it's a cluster of trees.
It's a cluster of trees there.
It's a cluster, not a tree.
Sorry, yeah, it's a cluster of trees. I might also remind that we're at 9.1, I think 9.3% preservation of existing vegetation. The minimum, or maximum required is 10. So we are slightly below the maximum required, but we are providing supplemental new landscaping along the south side of the store to further meet the requirements of the town code. And that's without the preservation of the tree from the store.
The ones required and ones supplemental.
That is correct.
The ones required, buffering, ones not.
We have a requirement to have preserved trees on site, which we have the 9.1, and forgive me, I don't remember the exact number, 9.6%, I believe. Then you have to provide additional, in addition to the buffering plantings, to meet any trees that you're killing.
Yes.
What is the change in grade if this is preserved?
It varies across the island, but anywhere from 1.2 to 1 feet of fill.
Any other questions, I'm sorry, any further evidence, Mr. Dunn?
No.
All right, any other questions for, from Mr. Dunn? All right, does the board wish to receive any further evidence on this pending motion or the amended motion, I should say?
All right, I don't think so.
All right, thank you very much. At this time, we will conclude the reopened proceeding, and the board may resume its deliberations.
Yes, Mayor Proton?
Well, in light of additional information, I do know that if you cover the roots of the tree to any significant depth at all, it will not survive.
No trees are particularly susceptible to that.
So if regarding your amendment to the motion, would you consider a amendment to, you know, if feasible, without damaging? I mean, if you're not, if we can't preserve the tree and we're gonna kill it, is...
Yes, I would consider adding the term "if feasible."
Any further discussion on the motion, on the amendment to the motion?
Are you contemplating a further amendment to the motion?
Adding words "if feasible" or whatever the words should be.
Let's keep this straight, unless, if that's the case, let's have formal amendment to the amendment.
I'm sorry, Mayor, head ball. That's right, you have not yet voted on the motion to amend the...
That's right. Keep things straight.
Yes, sir, so the next thing would be a motion to amend the amendment.
Motion to amend the amendment.
I'm with you.
So moved.
All right.
Term "if feasible."
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, in discussion on the, on the motion as amended. All right, the vote will be on the First Amendment adding the terms "if feasible" to the amended motion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like, signed? One, no, so it's approved 4 to 1. Amendment to the motion is to maintain the trees and to alter the drive, the parking area to allow for, to allow for the preservation of the trees in the parking aisle. I think that's a motion as amendment to the motion.
If feasible.
Globally feasible. Any discussion on that amendment? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like, signed?
You just voted on the first, the original amendment to the motion.
Right.
So now you gotta vote on the...
Now we vote on the motion as amended. Is there any discussion on the motion as amended?
Which motion?
I'm talking about, we are going back to the original motion as amended.
That's right.
Which original motion?
Going backwards, now you've got, the motion before the board has two separate amendments to it, and that's the motion that's on the floor at this time.
It's to approve the site plan with the two amendments.
With the two amendments.
That's correct.
Any discussion on that, approving the site plan with the two amendments.
Yeah, I simply gotta repeat that. We're gonna have to live with that traffic situation here. Somebody in the next few years, whenever Dr. Zer Carter studies, somebody needs to be sure that they're not adhering to their DOT design manual when they come through and say, oh, it's no big deal to sort out the mess that's on that street there, along with some of the others. Think about that when there's no suicide lane. So in the future, somebody's gonna have to stand here and be strong over that Carter study. But I want to say before we vote, I want to appreciate what the applicant has done to their store to make it look, make it fit within an Axet architecture style. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion?
Only that it's a shame that Driftwood and Carolinian don't line up with one another. It's a sure shame that
That's a four.
Planning long ago did not...
Our forefathers did that.
Line them up.
Okay, on the motion, on, this would be a vote on the motion with the two amendments incorporated. All in favor signify by saying aye. It would be site plan approval with the two amendments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like, signed, and sue order. And I'd like to thank the lead people, our engineers and architects, for the work that you've done with town staff. I know it's been a long, arduous process, and we certainly appreciate all the work that you've done and look forward to a very successful operation here. Very successful addition to our town. Thank you very much. Next item of consideration is the amendment to the traffic control map designating right turn only from Carolinian Circle. Dave, you gonna present that?
Yes, sir.
Roberta, could you bring up the exhibit? It's a PDF in that folder.
While she's doing that, I'll just remind the board, this is a matter which the board since it's a legislative body, this is a legislative decision.
That's it. All right, as part of the consideration for the legal site plan review was also the traffic circulation out of Carolinian Circle. In review, with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, their district engineer, as well as their division traffic engineer, we talked about that existing circulation pattern and some of the potential conflicts that could be created as a result of not only the existing traffic, but also a result of the increased traffic that may be seen from the proposed commercial development application. And what I wanted to go ahead and walk through is a series of vehicle circulation patterns as it stands right now, and also could be exacerbated with the increased traffic from this proposed application. What we have shown right here, this is South Crowington Highway. We have Carolinian Circle right here. This is the Kelly's Professional Development Center. We've got Satterfield Landing up top here, which is a signalized intersection, and then Driftwood. As Commissioner Kahoon had pointed out, there's an offset between Carolinian Circle and Driftwood. It's approximately 45 feet from center line to center line of those roadways. The first exhibit shows a left-hand movement out of Carolinian Circle. So you would turn into the center lane before making a transition into the northbound travel lane. Right now, as it stands, there's an existing deceleration or turning lane into Carolinian Circle, and the distance from the functional area of the intersection is approximately 90 feet from where that left-hand turn movement is from Carolinian Circle for that transition into the northbound travel lane and where that intersects with the skip line or the turning into Satterfield Landing and that left-hand turn lane. This second exhibit shows, one, a potential point of conflict, one with that left-hand turn lane at a Carolinian Circle, and then also a left-hand turn movement coming from northbound, excuse me, southbound traffic onto Driftwood. You can see here, in order to make that left-hand turn onto Driftwood, you would have to get over in the center lane, and that could potentially conflict with the left-hand turn coming off of Carolinian Circle. There, that is compounded by the fact that you could have another point of conflict when you consider left-hand movement out of Carolinian Circle, left-hand movement into Driftwood, and then also the northbound traffic making that transition to the left-hand turn lane into Satterfield Landing. One of the things that the board considered recently was a no-left-hand turn out of Gray Eagle Street. This is very similar in the various conflicts that it presents with traffic, with the various movements that could be made in this area. As it stands today, this is a dangerous intersection, but this could be potentially compounded by the increased traffic from this commercial development. So I just wanted to go ahead and present that to the board when we were considering the right-hand turn out of Carolinian Circle. And I think that there was a good point brought up that the board may also want to consider a restricted movement out of Driftwood and maybe amending the motion for a right-hand turn out of Driftwood Drive.
Dave, any questions for Dave?
Is the proposal just to put up no-left-turn signs?
As it stands right now, yes.
So there's nothing to stop people from making a left-hand turn? You're not talking about putting any impediment to making it more difficult to turn, or just putting up no-left-hand turn signs like I just saw it raised?
That's correct.
But those impediments, quote-unquote, don't stop anybody anyway.
They make it look, if you've got a smaller vehicle, they do for some point, but if you're gonna do it for, not for the dedicated person. And they're mostly local.
Been through this intersection quite a few times over the years, and actually, the most dangerous part is the left-hand turn off of Driftwood because you're coming out of Carolinian Circle into that turn lane, and somebody's turning left over Driftwood, that's where the real conflict comes. You're meeting deadhead on right turn in the middle lane, so my preference would be right turn only out of Driftwood and leave Carolinian Circle alone because we're gonna have additional, we're gonna need to have additional traffic to be able to access 158 from this, from this development. We just proved, I think we could probably be better off with right turn only off of Driftwood rather than also Carolinian Circle. Any other discussion or questions?
Does your map go any further down? Toward the project? No, so I had this up.
Okay.
All right, and what we have here, this is an overlay of the proposed site development plan, which shows the full movement driveway circulation.
You're gonna force more conflict coming out of the main entranceway if we do right turn only out of Carolinian Circle.
You've got Plaza de Sol, and you've got turning in... You've got Plaza de Sol and you've got turning into Satterfield with a stoplight.
Plaza de Sol is, is really not that busy. And the people from the tackle shop come out at the stoplight, at least always do anyway. For Plaza de Sol, always come out at the stoplight. We're across TW's parking lot thing, come out at the stoplight. Could we refer this back and have some additional study done on it before we make a decision? We've got some time before we make a decision. Right. We've got some time.
And, and we can provide additional circulation patterns from Driftwood, which we had not provided with this proposal.
What's the, when does the Lidl construction due to be finished? Is this critical to the, the work they're gonna do for the next eight months or so, nine months?
Sorry, we can't hear you. All right. Need to be on the record and we need to hear you.
Michael K. Zackey, Design Group, project manager, architect, for this. The decision like this would impact the owner in that, that we're not really sure when the project will go into construction, right? So as far as the timeline on that, that's undetermined. However, if it does go to construction in a contract with the general contractor signed in advance of that, then it would be a change order for the contractor. We could go and, and, and take care of that as far as putting amendments into the bid itself to, to accommodate any changes to the traffic flow or anything else that, that would need to be performed.
Okay, I think we're really just asking is how much time do we have to really study that whole issue there? And this is not immediate that we need to do this Carolinian Circle thing.
The site plan's already been approved.
Right.
Doesn't affect your site plan.
Right.
Right, doesn't affect you.
We were just looking at studying streets.
Right.
Doesn't affect you. We're talking about town streets and the public pathways.
Yeah, yeah, town only outside of the site, no, would not affect us.
So no impact on the Apple or- This time, I recommend we sit on this, do some additional study.
Well, I'll make a motion that we refer this back to town staff and that we have a, a traffic engineer study this, this situation and come back to us at a later date. Is there a second to that motion?
Yeah, let me ask, yeah, I'm gonna second it. But let me, let me ask a question. Okay, did we mention in the original, or is there anywhere in this original, the thing that we passed? Does it reference the traffic circulation on Carolinian Circle? That we need to, so we need to formally remember to bring this back up one way or another to not, not leave a dangling modifier here in the original, original plan. That's all I only concern.
Any further discussion? Now, all those in favor of the motion to refer this back to staff and, and, you know, traffic engineering study to determine best traffic patterns for this area signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign, and there being none, so order. Okay, Holly, project updates on Focus UDO.
Morning, May, and Commissioners. Happy to let you know that the Focus Technical Committee met on Thursday, the 21st, to review the first set of draft articles for the, the new UDO. The purpose of that meeting was to look at that. The committee had had a couple of weeks ahead of time to review the draft. We were able to provide that feedback to the consultant ahead of the meeting and we worked through a short list, which is in your cover sheet of concerns that we really needed to get through before that meeting. The committee was able to constructively talk through those, come to an agreement, and they set our next meeting for Wednesday, November the 29th, at 11:00 a.m. Commissioner, Commissioners may have something to add to that?
I would just say that we had great attendance at the meeting. Very good preparation, submission of comments and consideration of those comments by staff before the meeting. So it was a very effectively planned and conducted meeting. I thank Holly and the rest of the staff for that.
Okay, very interesting. You read through it. Quite a few comments there. Any questions for Holly on UDO?
Can I ask a couple? Could you interpret the colors for me? What's the, I, I got blue. That's, if it's in blue, it was commented in blue. What's the yellow?
The yellow is indicating that it had been pulled directly from our existing ordinances.
Okay, so. So if it's, if it's not in yellow, it's, so does the blue cover the yellow up? If, if it was yellow and everybody commented on it, would it turn blue?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, so let me ask a question. And I, I, I'm gonna admit to not having read through all of this thing because I frankly got stopped on page 1-2.
Okay.
This one here?
Okay.
Okay, and, and my question was, who wrote section 1? Where did section 1.1, 1.2, and 1.3 come from?
Let me grab my laptop real quick.
Well, that's okay. I, I, let me give a rhetorical question. And the reason I ask that is because the committee rightfully unloaded on that whole section as being, where did this come from? What are you trying to say? And, and I'm afraid, just as a general, you know, going through here, I mean, I thought, I don't know, it just seemed like the committee was asked to do, asked to do an awful lot of work that they may, maybe shouldn't have if we knew what the source of this originally was.
I, I think in the original document, I can look back and, and let you know that. I'd be happy to do that. I think some portion of that was actually pulled from our existing ordinance and it's a matter of needing to go back and clean up the language that was placed there and merge it in with new language proposed by the consultant.
Okay.
Which consult?
Uh, Holland.
Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, they're, they're, that co-write is no longer involved in the project.
Is this original code, original consultant language or new consultant language? I think was your question.
When we refer consultant, we're talking about the president.
Okay.
Correct.
It's just, it was just a comment. I was surprised at the amount of correction the committee had to, on, just on the first page. I said, I hope we're not into that because we'll never finish in a couple of years if, if the intent, if we have to go through this much work.
It's, it's, gets better as you go along.
Right.
The fewer, the fewer comments, the further you get into it.
Maybe they just gave up.
If I could just comment, it's good that this came right up front because it kinda set the stage for the process here. You can see at the end of each of those paragraphs, 1, 1-1 and 1-1-2, there's a parenthetical and it says what section that came from. What it highlighted was that this is the base of the problem that we're trying to deal with. That's essentially the original code and it was plucked from those sections and put together and it highlighted the fact that those things were repetitive, conflicting, and needed a lot of work. And so, that's what we're trying to effect.
Good. Well, that's, that's good. And I, and I think my comment is the comments that I saw in there were excellent. You know, it's not a problem with the comments or the work of the committee, it was just the amount of it. I didn't, I guess I was, maybe I skipped over all that. Very good, drive on with that.
I would say regardless of the amount of comments, the committee was able to talk through at the meeting all the main points of concern and kind of consensus and, and move forward. So it was very constructive feedback, both in writing and, and at the meeting.
Very good. I think we off to a good start there when I read, I read just about all of it and it's, I think you off to a real good start. Any other questions for Holly? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Andy, we have a consideration of a letter review flood maps.
Okay. Good, good morning. Last month, you had a presentation from Dr. Rick Ludick. He had done some analysis of the preliminary flood maps. He'd been involved with the development of the ADS-CRC models that were used to create the flood maps. We told you last month that we would be bringing back a, a letter for your review. That would be our comments to the state regarding the preliminary flood maps. This letter tries to encapsulate everything that we've discussed since the, the maps came out in June of 2016. He started out by looking at some information that we had maintained from previous storms regarding damage to various areas of town and sort of overlaying that in GIS with the current and the proposed flood, special flood hazard areas to determine where we thought that the reduction in the special flood hazard area would, would create a risk or vulnerability into the community. We presented that to you. It was fairly obvious that there was drastic differences between this set of maps and the 2006 maps that are currently in effect. We felt like the, there was potential problems based on the damage information. A lot of the structures that we documented damage to during Irene and obviously during Matthew were, were recorded actual damage and the, these properties are either being taken out of the flood zone or the, the base flood elevations is being reduced to a point that's essentially at grade and not really affecting any construction standards that would protect property. So after that, that process, we set off to sort of explore what the problems were with the maps. We had Spencer Rogers come here and give a presentation earlier this year. He also talked about the modeling process and sort of looked at the whole state and what's been done, pointed out a lot of problems. Following that, the board adopted a resolution requesting FEMA and the state to look at their models. You approved that earlier this year. And since then, we did have Dr. Ludick come and he shed further light in, on the modeling process and the problems with that. And this, this letter really captures all of that information. It highlights the, the reductions in the special flood hazard area, the, the lower BFEs, the problems with the model. It also talks about the lack of shallow flooding studies that are not part of coastal flood mapping process. Obviously, shallow flooding's become a big problem here, especially after Hurricane Matthew. That whole, the whole area that was flooded was essentially shallow flooding. Regardless of where it comes from, coastal, coastal storm surge or, or shallow flooding, it, it causes flood damage. And so what we're really after is trying to protect the properties in the town. Essentially, most of the properties west of NC-12, the beach road, are being taken out of the flood zone in some of the lowest areas of town. And so, we really concerned about that. I think the board shares that concern. So we've attempted to prepare comments on the flood maps in this letter. We've, we've got some exhibits attached to that that highlight some of the things you were showing before and we also attached the resolution that you approved previously this year. So, this is our best effort at trying to, to capture all of that and we present this for your review and approval. And thanks to staff, I mean, everybody worked on this, collaborated, David Ryan, Holly, Kelly, the entire staff, David Morton. So this is a reflection of everybody's work over the last few weeks, so thanks to everybody.
I think the letter's extremely well done, extremely well written. Are there any questions or comments for, for Andy? Commissioner Kahoon?
Roberta, can you go to the chart that was a part of this?
Is it the one at the very end, the rainfall tables or?
No, it's, it's right here.
Okay.
Right here. That particular 1993 March storm, that wasn't an ocean overwash event.
That was a sound side event where the sound came all the way up to the ocean.
The ocean didn't come over. For those of us that were here, it was a case of the sound coming up, the causeway flooding, but the water came over from the west to the east. So that's not represented correctly in that particular-
So that would be a sound of the water?
It would be a sound coming over and meeting the ocean event.
We can make-
But it wasn't the ocean meeting the sound event.
We can make that change.
Yeah, my feet driving along got wet from the sound. It didn't get wet from the ocean.
I need Ralph to read this letter.
Ralph can confirm. Yeah. We have to even confirm that.
Are there, are there any, any other comments?
We'll make that change.
I agree with the letter as it's written and going, but I think you ought to further inform the governor that this, these flood maps are just awful. And let, make him aware, not just from his staff reporting to him how great they are, but from the people out here on the coast telling him how bad they are.
Possibly could write a cover letter to this letter and send it to, to, to the governor only? Is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Like, like this letter is extremely-
I think that one's good, but I'm just saying, add a cover letter and tell him that there are major issues with the flood maps that are gonna have long-term ramifications as, as presented.
Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
First off, let me say, outstanding. This is really outstanding.
Thank you.
I wanna make a comment and I'm not sure you want to include it, but I, I spent a lot of time thinking about this stuff. And based on what Spencer Rogers said, talked about, and then Dr. Ludick, okay? These are stochastic models. They're based on probability and whatnot. The output from a model like that can only be a range such that you then, on the other end, you pick from that range what is appropriate. Okay, this is not a, not a point, pinpoint, this is the right answer thing. It's a range of answers that you, you pick from based on probability. The problem, I think, and I don't know. I mean, in one respect, the models are being used inappropriately. I suspect that the older models and all of the other stuff were much closer to a hand wave. And, and so we ended up with maps with the current flood zones, which are, which were pretty loose and they were a hand, really a hand wave. Because the models, they've been very good at claiming, well, look, now the new, the new technology lets us get down right to the almost, you know, the square foot of, of predictability and the rest of it. We didn't have that before. They were large chunks labeled such and such. And on the fringes, they were, you know, you might have an X here, an AE or a BE here, but it was a large area and you could understand they weren't quite tied in. I suspect we've fallen into, or not we, but they have fallen into the trap of we've got all this extreme detail and extreme accuracy and hundreds and thousands of data points and now we're down to saying every, almost at the individual house level of, you know, what's your flood zone? And we've fallen into the trap of saying, look, with all this detail, we can now label everything a particular flood zone. No. It still goes back to the fact that the basic model is stochastic. So you can label this, this point as a probability of something happening or two or three things happening on there, but you can't lay it in there as exactly this. And I don't-
But yeah, the flood maps have always been designed that way.
Right, but I mean, yeah.
Your in, or your out.
Yeah, but they, but they were basically, given the very lack of detail in there, they were large, amorphous things. And, and now, this, this wholesale flop from one, one poor trail to another, it does look to me as if the output for these things are being used inappropriately. We've fallen in love with the detail that's there. I don't know how much of that is the issue on the accuracy and the impact of them, but it just, it does appear to be an inappropriate use of the model themselves and the outputs. And I, I don't know, but I love your letter, but the more I sat there and played with that thing. There's a problem with just even using them at that level of detail.
Right.
Don't ask me to write that. Don't ask me to write that in a paragraph. Just.
Mr. Walters?
I'd just like to say thank you very much for the letter and all we've worked on. It's comprehensive. The supporting documentation is there. So I think it was a job well done and I support this letter with the fix on the sound.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll take a motion, Mr. Walters. The latter will be corrected.
Seconded. Seconded, discussion on the motion. If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Puzzled, signed.
If I could just mention one more thing. We do have a meeting scheduled on October 19th with the staff of Nagshead and Dare County and the other municipalities, as well as the Outer Banks Home Voters Association, to discuss what we might do with higher regulatory standards once we start getting to that point. And I think there are some proposals that might be thrown out on the table for us to consider as far as what we might do. So at some point, we'll have to begin talking to the board about what our approach is going to be and probably provide some analysis on, you know, what the different options could be. So we'll keep you informed on that.
At what point do we have to formally adopt these horrible maps?
Well, I guess there's the 90-day appeal period. And then beyond that, they have an opportunity to respond to the appeals that are made. And then there's a six-month compliance period. And I think that's sort of a minimum timeframe. I understand that in some areas of the state, it's taking much longer than that to resolve some of the appeals. So it's hard to say, but I would say we probably still have six to nine months at a minimum.
I mean, did we hear about this in 2016? We've been waiting on this deadline since 2016.
There are some appeals going on, I know with Carteret County, some of those areas. And it looks like there may be some remodeling or reconsideration of some aspects of it.
They have the opposite problem that we do.
Right. We have the opportunity to adopt higher regulatory standards, but their BFEs are going up so much that they're, you know, they have no choice but to try and appeal it.
Well, they have no choice because they're putting areas that have never flooded before.
Right.
Okay, Andy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any open items to be brought forward at this time? I didn't know if any of the agenda. If not, let's continue on to new business. We have probably, I think we can finish within the hour. Would you like to go straight through? Would you like to have some more?
Go through.
The committee reports?
I do. I do have a couple. Just a brief update on the Dare County Tourism Board. The actual-to-actual numbers from January through July are in, and so far occupancy is up 8.66 percent and meals are up 6.79 percent. So that's good news. And then also the.
That's with the county collection?
That's with the county. I didn't bring the individual numbers. The Dare County Gross Collections on Retail Sales, January through July are up 14.63 percent over the previous year. So that's all good news. And then also, I attended the North Carolina Resort Towns and Convention Cities Annual Meeting on Wednesday, September 20th, and you came off that board, I believe. And just to give you a brief update on who is now on that board. The mayor of Holden Beach, Alan Holden, is now leading that board. And then we also have just Brendan Lyerly is the vice chair, and she is the mayor of Banner Elk. Tony McEwen is the secretary. He is the Wilmington Assistant to the City Manager for Legislative and Governmental Affairs. Sin Brochures, the needed past chair, and the Oak Island Mayor. I was voted in as a director, and we have Boyd Payne, the Concord Assistant City Manager, is also a director. And Ed Evans is a director, and he's the Blowing Rock Town Manager. And this group worked really hard last year when you were there on working with the legislature about the redistribution of sales tax dollars.
Yes.
We each, in our board goal area, you know, have met with staff, whether it's, you know, Parks and Rec in my area. And then there was a Doughty Park Ad-Hoc Committee in the same business and the same dawn with Shoreline Management. I mean, I know we each met with staff to get a plan, to organize, and before we have a committee meeting, which is, all of that can't be done in the committee meeting because it's just not effective or efficient for the committee. So all that work is kind of done in the background. But then, when the committee meets, you know, you have an agenda and you have a plan and you have, you're there as the board liaison with staff, and then you discuss the items. I think it's just a matter of efficiency and maybe semantics here a little bit. But my understanding is, it's like any of our other ad hoc committees, and that, you know, Commissioner Demers will be the board liaison on this proposed committee. I'm sure there will be at least one staff member there. But there's work that goes on in the background to prepare for these.
I guess my question is, are we going to dovetail or is it two separate?
Oh, I would say it's together.
My thing was, we dovetail.
There's only one stormwater plan and one stormwater initiative, and it's all on the same page. I mean, the staffing is going to go in a separate direction in the committee.
Now, this is to facilitate communication and to get everybody together, not go off in different directions.
There aren't two different courses of action here.
That's the, what I'm asking.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded to establish the Stormwater Committee as an ad hoc committee with the objectives as spelled out by the town managers. Any further discussion on that motion? If not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Puzzled, signed. Looks like it passed five to nothing. Next item on the agenda is the discussion of requests for state legislation to authorize additional growings. Mr. Hardwin, would you like to present that, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. You've had long discussions about, since the 2011 Beach Nurishment Project, about the south end of the project that needing an anchor that we've kind of referred to it as with the loss of sand, which couples with the high erosion rate in the south end. We've tried to explore what options we have. As you're all well aware, state law doesn't presently allow us to have a growing. The General Assembly directed CRC to look at legislation or a study to do terminal growings, which resulted in, I believe, the approval of five terminal growings. What we're asking for in this letter is the recognition that growings in conjunction with beach nourishment projects could be a good, a good thing to keep the sand in place, to keep it where we need it, good protection of taxpayer dollars. So what we're asking in a letter to Senator Cook, as well as a letter to Representative Boswell, is to look, to ask them, to ask the legislator to look at the feasibility of a growing study with the direction and input hopefully coming from the CRC or guidance from the CRC. This letter is for the mayor's signature, and it also copies the Senate Pro Tem Leader and Representative, I mean, excuse me, Speaker of the House.
Mr. Coon, what do you think?
One, CRC to explore alternatives for rule changes. CRC does not do any legislative changes.
Okay.
You can ask the legislature for legislative changes, but CRC does not do any legislative changes, nor do they lobby the legislature for them. Where it says to explore alternatives, it would be for rule changes, but not legislative changes.
So we'd eliminate the phrase, direct the CRC from the letter and just ask the legislature to explore alternatives. Is that what you're saying?
Request the legislature.
To explore.
Explore alternatives for legislation or to ask the CRC to study alternatives to terminal growings for rule changes.
Yes, ma'am. I've heard.
Okay, so direct the CRC to study, which is explore or study.
Just delete the legislative, it would be explore alternatives for rule changes that would allow additional structural solutions. Would that do what we need to do? Just eliminate that.
And Mr. Ratzemberger had it almost speak two different sentences. The legislature to explore alternatives to legislation and CRC to explore possible rule changes.
We can make that change.
Okay. So CRC to research alternatives and the legislature to make the rule changes. You said it backwards, right?
No.
Oh, CRC rules.
Rules.
Okay, got it.
CRC makes rules.
There are too many rules in the legislature.
See what we need to, can we make those changes? Can we make those changes and send a letter?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll do that. Thank you. All right. Consensus on that.
I will note, I will also note that it's already out there at Nagshead, Los Arches, Shoreline. Looked like New Jersey.
Sure is.
That's not what we're asking for.
It doesn't matter what we're asking for. I'm telling you what's out there.
Which, nothing happens quickly, you know, we're talking years here. So if we don't ask for the background, we'll never know what we can kind of do.
All right. All right, we'll get that under our desk. Next item, discussion of debris yard, bulk pickup. Mr. Hardwin, you hear that one also?
Yes, sir. Two parts to this, first being the bulk pickup, second being the debris yard. For the bulk pickup, we're simply requesting that the board consider the time for bulk pickup from the right-of-way of property owners from October 1st instead of through April 30th, that we make that we end it on March 31st. And the reason for doing this is, in May, we start the summer schedule. So that gives us a very small window. As you're well aware, as we're all probably accustomed to doing, we make the one last big effort to get everything that we're going to get out to the right-of-way there at the very end of April. So we accumulate weeks' worth of debris that needs to be picked up at the same time that we're switching into a summer schedule. So it, the overlap there has caused delays in service. So if we could back this up until March 31st, that gives us a whole month to try and catch up with the debris before we start to focus on picking up trash cans.
I personally think it's a good idea. I just sold my house and talked with the people that bought it, targeted last week, and they were totally amazed that we have the pickup schedule that we have. Everybody else is twice a year, and that's it. Get it to the curb twice a year, and that's it.
And we would ask this in lieu of doing that. We don't want to reduce the service because we know how, obviously, it's a service that's well taken advantage of.
Well, we know that this, by cutting off April 30th, we're going through the first two or three weeks of May still picking up debris. I don't know what last year anyway. What's your pleasure? Would you like to have public work to change this pickup schedule? March 30, October 1st to March 31st?
Okay.
Are we comfortable with that? Commissioner Ratzemberger, how about you?
Yeah, there'll be a lot of complaints from the Easter crowd. It's okay. At some point in time, we need to say, this is it. Adapt, learn to adapt to what we're doing because it's out of hand. I mean, there's mattresses in the road, outside the list, everything else.
Anybody else? Okay, we got a consensus on that one then. How about the?
I have a couple of questions. One is, you're vetting a software reader? Is that coming forward in the budget?
Actually, it's part of the debris yard. The staff has, we've long tried to look at how we can better manage that service. As we've told you in the past, we, the sticker system that we implemented has helped. However, stickers don't stay to the car that they were assigned to, and things change. And we're seeing a lot of overuse of the debris yard, and we really don't have a good way of tracking who's using it, how often they're using it, and whether or not the permit is even affixed to the right vehicle. So it became very clear to us that in order for us to make recommendations to you, we needed to bring some data and some information forward to help us make the recommendations and to help you make your decision. So what we're proposing to do, and these, this would have no impact on the budget because we can, this is what the sticker would look like, similar in size to what we presently have, similar in size to what we use for the beach driving. And this can be read, we can produce these at very little cost. And we wouldn't have to, I mean, there's retained earnings in the budget that we could use for this. And it's a, you can use any code reader, your iPhone, any cell phone, anything that can read this. For the debris yard attendant, when the sticker comes, he can take a scan of it, and on his phone, it'll tell him, it'll give him a green circle or a red X. And when it pulls up, it'll have the license plate number, and he'll simply have to walk around back to verify that it is in fact matching. It will give us a reading for, and this is just software that's in the cloud, that we pay for the number of users, and it's relatively inexpensive and it will have no budget impact. What that'll do is it'll tell us how often you, as an individual, are coming, how many, when our heavy days are, when our heavy times are, who our heavy users are, and it'll help us to start to collect some real data. Also, and what it'll do is, we can track if somebody moves out of town, and we can take the land transfer tax records when properties are sold, and we can match that against our database for stickers, and we can invalidate stickers for someone that's moved or for whatever reason they're, you know. There's always with these stickers, one of the issues is people don't like to put them on their vehicle. With these, we can put them inside, you can put them inside the door jamb. So if, you know, I understand some people don't want a sticker on their car. It just needs to be affixed to the vehicle, so it doesn't have to be on the bumper or visible on the window. It can be on the door jamb. And so we think this is going to help us get a better handle. We will have to reissue stickers. This is something that if the board's agreeable to what we're doing, we'd like to start this January 1st. We know we'll have an overlap. It's going to take some time to get these stickers transferred out, and we'll kind of, we'll aggressively try and get these stickers replaced. But we're not going to turn anybody away because they don't have this sticker until a certain amount of time has lapsed where everybody's had a reasonable amount of time. The other thing we'd like to, the commercial use is the issue. We're also asking that we can limit trailers to one axle trailers, as well as nothing bigger than a standard pickup truck. And those are rules in our policy that we can easily implement. And that's, I think Dare County has already gone this route for taking things to, man you now, have to take commercial things to, on the way to Stumpy Point. So what we think we'll be able to do is, a year from now, come back to you and be able to say, yes, in fact, we are getting overuse of commercial use. Or we can look at this residence that has brought in limbs every week for the year, and we know that there's not all coming off of that property. So that's what we're intending to do. This program will do a lot more than that. This, this program will do a lot more than that, um, a lot more than, than just this, and, and, and it gives real readable, real information, um, to the debris yard attendant, and it makes it really pretty simple, um, for Harris to operate.
Yes, ma'am.
One other question. In the memo that you gave?
Yes, ma'am.
Copy of vehicle registration and proof of residency, shouldn't it be proof of property ownership, not residency?
Yes, ma'am.
Because the bulk of our owners are not residents?
It should, thank you. Yeah. This, anyone who has developed property is, uh, eligible to get this sticker.
I think we've got a real, real problem with commercial usage. Unfortunately, they're quite often, uh, Saturday this last few months, and, and I don't think I've been in there any time there wasn't a, a landscaper or construction person in there with, with the break, even though they had their stickers on their trucks. And that's something else we need to guard against, and I think this system can show that up.
It will. Yes.
I was gonna say, not to mention that that landscaper has already charged his client to dump, to, to pick that up. Yeah. Yeah, for dumping.
And, and, and Saturday with a double, double-wheeled trailer and didn't have landscaper on the truck, but it had to be. Anything else, Mr. Hardman?
Yes, ma'am.
Could I?
Yes.
It says here, "One sticker per build-on property." What's that mean for a condo? What does a condo of build-on property? I just wanna be sure our definition doesn't get
I think we need to, I mean, we've
Need to work on the definition.
Yeah, and that, one unit for con, yes. We'd make, we wouldn't give one to, to Sugar Creek, we'd give one to each unit.
Right.
Uh, and it's really, it, it's probably more verified by the address than the, than the building itself.
That's, that's fine.
Each individual address.
I just didn't wanna have something that was prescripting, that we're gonna have to fix because it was in hoops. People will have to learn how to change their, you know, if they change their license plate. And I agree on stand, single axles, if you're a resident, I doubt you've got much more than that. And it says, "Standard pickup." Doorbed, long bed, duly?
I think what we're trying to avoid is the, the dump truck.
That's fine, but I mean, somewhere in there, we oughta
We'll, we'll
Formalize what the word pickup means.
I will narrow that definition to
You know, there's a difference between mine and the mayor's little bitty thing.
I'm still a half-ton. I'm gonna load her up good.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Lighty, you have some good news for us.
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. I, um, wanted to, um, make sure the board was aware that on Monday, the United, the United States Supreme Court denied the petition for a search area that had been filed by the Nyes family, um, from the, um, ultimate, uh, decision by our Supreme Court, uh, in the Nyes versus Emerald Isle case. Uh, you'll remember that that was the, um, case that confirmed, uh, that the, um, Dry Sand Beach is subject to public trust rights, uh, and open for use by the public. Also, uh, confirmed some authority for local governments to regulate the state's ocean beaches. Uh, the town of Nagshead, along with all the other towns in Dare County and the county itself, uh, had participated, um, as, uh, as an amicus in the case and had filed a brief in support of the underlying decision from the North County Court of Appeals written by Judge McGee. Uh, and that effectively ends that litigation, and so that establishes that the, uh, holdings from the Nyes case are the law in the state of North Carolina.
Okay, anything else for us?
Means that the beach belongs to the public, no property owner can say, "That's my beach, get off it."
That's correct. Cannot, cannot direct fencing or other ways of obstructing the public's right to use the beach.
I don't think everybody understands.
Anything else for us? Okay, Town Manager, do you have anything else for us?
Just one thing, if I may, ask the police chief to invite you all to the Coffee with the Cop. They named it, um, so I guess it's okay to say our chief cop is gonna give you an invitation.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just want to, uh, remind everybody of our Coffee with the Cop event. It is a national event, and that is what it is called, uh, but our event is tomorrow night from four to six at Wave Riders Coffee and Deli at Pirate's Key, uh, 3022 South Croton Highway. Um, it's informal, there's no agenda, it's just some of our officers are gonna be there, I'm gonna be there, the deputy chief, lieutenant, some of our other supervisors, and it's just an informal way that if you have issues, have concerns, you can come with us, you can get a cup of coffee, have a sandwich, and, uh, talk to a police officer. And I would like to thank Bobby and Dave Stager for staying open late. They're the owners of Wave Riders and have been very helpful in hosting this event. It'll be the second time that we're doing it, um, and we look forward to the third, third event, which would be sometime this coming spring. So we'd just like everybody to come and join us if they can. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I've got an email to go with you and Town Manager. Sense meet, so, so, no dispute. I guess you've probably got a copy of it also.
Yes, I did.
Board Commissioners agenda, any, anything, any Commissioners you'd like to bring to the board this morning? Yes?
I do. Um, I'm sure all of you read the Coastal Times. I was asked by the residents that met from the pond and Nagshead Acres to bring their concerns forward to the board today. There was a meeting last week, and I got some information last night, which I did forward to all members of the board, but it was on last Thursday, Thursday, I believe. Um, they had planned the meeting, and I'm gonna read a little bit from the notes, and even two weeks in advance, invited about twenty property owners, and I guess they had about twenty-eight. Um, the only topic of conversation was drainage. It was not a political meeting, as referenced by anybody in the public or in end-of-the-week reports. The subject was drainage, and that's all, I believe, that they discussed. And the main issues that they brought forward and are bringing forward again to this board are lack of drainage ditches being cleaned, people on Bridge Lane say it had been between two and three years. Uh, request was made on October 22nd of sixteen, and have the ditches cleaned in the pond, and the pond said it had not been done. Uh, drainage of stormwater for Nagshead Acres was discussed. Uh, they're worried about that, especially since they'd been, yeah, some four and a half years ago with the town and the manager, and the people would like to have more communication coming forward to answer those concerns. They feel like they're not, their voices are not being heard, and that they can call Town Hall and not get responses back. They're talking about present houses flooding in both subdivisions during extremely rainy weather, and that there's a concerted area where people are filling, um, such as, and I'll bet that John Mark Quiddly, I know he has a stop work order, but the question that's coming forward is, what is gonna be done about that? Is the fill gonna be removed? Is it gonna continue to stay there? I mean, the people really wanna know what's gonna happen with those things when there is a stop work order and the fill's still there, and it keeps flooding, flooding down, at what point does the fill go away? So they're, you know, the people are very, very concerned about, and I know that's happened in other areas of the town as well, where people have filled and it just stays there, it never gets remediated. People can submit a stormwater plan, but it doesn't solve the issue of what's been put in there illegally and so forth. And they're requesting that every complaint should at least get an answer, whether it's good, bad, and every phone call should be returned, and that they're feeling very disconnected from Town Hall. And I, e, that defaults back to us because we're part of the system as well, that there's a very big disconnect. Um, the group's gonna meet again in a month, um, so if there are any answers to anything about ditches, drainage, maintenance, perhaps we should have a formal maintenance schedule, and that, on our website somewhere, have a ma, have our, have our maintenance schedule on there, so people can look at it and see, okay, we're scheduled this month of this year to have our ditches maintained. And on the same token, that means that when the town goes in and puts in swales, people can't fill them back up again. Once we do a swale, which is always in the public right-of-way, it's not private property, that those swales stay there, and if people start filling them in, then the town needs to take corrective action to stop that filling in, because that's no, different than illegal dumping, it's illegal filling of swales. But we need to have a better, and hopefully, this group of people will communicate back, but I think the people there had a very orderly meeting, from what I understand, I did not attend, but it was kept on track, on target, and if anybody's there, Tony, I think you were there, I think you were there at some point. If it was not on track, please tell us so, but, um, that's what, there, the, one of the biggest issues I hear is the disconnect between the people and Town Hall. And by Town Hall, I'm including us in that disconnect. So, and the pe, again, like I say, they wanna know what happens with illegal, how long does illegal filling stay and cause impacts? I know Commissioner DeMurez was taken out with Wayne Gray earlier this week and talked about the ball fields that are running down through Carolin, Carolina Circle, and then back into the back of the pond, as well. You know, what is the remedy to that situation? So I think people, more than anything else, want answers. And if I'm wrong, anybody tell me I'm wrong. But, I mean, I commend the neighborhoods for getting together. They've had issues, um, as we all know, Bridge Lane has had issues for a long time. And I know we've talked about working with outfalls, getting outfalls cleaned up, um, there's a question about connecting to outfalls, and I think we have the opportunity now to try to push those forward, to try to connect everything we can to have looped systems so that one outfall doesn't have to drain everything. Just because we've been told no in the past, doesn't mean we can't keep on appealing it and trying to get it to work out.
Going back on that already. Do you know if any, uh, staff or Commissioners were invited to that meeting so we could know what was going on?
I was invited, I could not attend, um, but then I was asked if I would bring the concerns forward, and I said yes. So, and I would continue to do that for any group of citizens, because I think we're liaisons.
Any of these groups that we, that we know are meeting like that, we should encourage them to, uh, and, and to invite Town staff and Commissioners, so we can, can have the, can have the input and can possibly give them some input on what is, what is going on.
I was invited, and I, fortunately, I still work just about every night now, all the time, so, but, um, I will be glad to take any input back and give it to people that talk to me. And I would encourage, um, staff to communicate solutions, as well as we can, we can't, maybe, but talk to, about reestablishing swales, and put as much information as possible on our website, and communicate to either HOAs, because I know a lot of people have HOAs, the village does, but not all neighborhoods do, but, um, I'd like to think some of the people that you talked about this morning will start becoming liaisons back to their communities and establishing better communications between citizens and the town. Can I ask you one question about stop work orders, and when does that, at what point does that cease?
Able to pull up the website? Go to our stormwater page? Um, can you scroll? I'm sorry, I can't see. You scroll down to the information that's on this, and you'll see that, the, the maintenance work that we've done, keep scrolling down. There's the drainage inventory, that you can see a list of the inventory that we have, um, information of that group that we talked about earlier. Um, if you scroll down even further, you'll see some maps of infrastructure with the, um, update of the, the mapping project. You can see there, there's information, this, all this information that's on our webpage now regarding stormwater. It's all the presentations that we've made, um, the, uh, the budget presentations, the, the capital projects that the board's approved. Talks about the revenue that we've generated and the expenditures, to show where all the money's gone, um, the, the, after July and August, when we had all that rain and went in and did some work and some clearing, you can see where we've done all of that clearing on this, on this website. So there is, there is some good information about what's going on that I'd encourage people to go and look at this. As far as the stop work orders, and I, I was thinking now, how, how will I know if I've gone too far, because the attorney will stop me after I've said something that I shouldn't, so, um, it's too late when that happens, but
Just let him stop you.
Um, there, there is a stop work order, notice of violation has been issued on the property that you referenced, um, civil penalties are being assessed on that. The, the, what we're trying to, to determine is, um, the elevation, the pre-fill elevation of that site. There were two adjacent properties that were just recently, um, filled and built upon. They do meet the town, uh, code of ordinances and the town stormwater plan. The, the present property has no, uh, building permit, has no health department permit, um, and until we can verify, uh, how much fill has been brought, brought in, um, we, we don't know how much is compliant and how much is not. So the question of how long does that, how long does, um, fill that we don't know if it's compliant or not, how long does it get to sit there? Um, I don't, I don't know exactly when this notice of violation has been sent, but we'll, we will try and, uh, get that pushed because of that concern, um, that when property gets filled and it's just sitting there in limbo, in the meantime, what are the effects of that fill? And if there, um, ill effects, then that, it needs to be addressed sooner rather than later. The, the, and also, there, the, when the town approved the, um, Satterfield Park, there was a berm on the site plan that was, that was required to kinda hold that water, and actually, actually, the southeast corner of that park is constructed to hold water, that's how it was designed and how it was approved, and that berm over time has been compromised, um, and, and we're working with the county to, for them to get that put back in place. So I, you know, I, without going too much further into the John Mark Quiddly issues, I, I can tell you that we'll, uh, fast-track getting that fill where it needs to be.
And the remediation of the berm?
As well. It's, it's, as quickly as possible. Though, the, the issue that the county has told us is that it's been so wet, it's been difficult for them to get back there. I think now that's not the case, and they can get the, the required fill back there to build the berm.
Some fill is showing up in there already, but it's not
It's not complete.
To the original yet.
That's important, because that parking lot slopes down into that area, and that by berm not being there, that, all that drainage is going from those fields through the parking lot, all the way back into the neighborhoods. And we need to make sure that that berm is maintained, not just allowed to go away.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, if I could comment along the same lines, and I appreciate Commissioner Cahoon being the medium for the neighborhoods to bring these to, issues to light. I would've liked to have been invited to the meeting, but that, it was their meeting, and they can, they can do what they want. Very glad to, to get the comments, and hope that continues in the future, that we are given the issues, and it all, I think it all comes down largely to a communications challenge, and I urge everyone in town, in any neighborhood, if they feel like they are submitting concerns and not getting responses, to not accept that, to, I'm gonna speak for Cliff here now, if they feel like they got in touch with a staff person and didn't get a response, elevate it to Deputy Town Manager or to Cliff, or to me directly. I'm very accessible, and I feel like it's our responsibility to get a response to every citizen. And if, and I've, um, heard from Cliff on this, and, um, he's instituted new procedures to help ensure that we do that. And, um, I don't think there's any fingers to be pointed or fault to be found on anybody intentionally doing something wrong, but there have been issues. And we welcome the better communication, this new committee that we've set up, because if we all work on this together, we can help make things better. There aren't any immediate, uh, wave-a-one solutions to the larger problems. We've got to take a, a very considered analysis of that and, and have our master plan, but there are things that can be done, and we've learned a lot of lessons through the are things that can be done, and we've learned a lot of lessons through the drastic rainfalls that we've had over the past several months. We have regular maintenance scheduled, and we have anticipatory maintenance scheduled. If we know that there's a heavy storm coming in, or we're threatening with a hurricane, we don't just stick to the maintenance. If we get the maintenance two months ago, and it's not due for the next month, but we've got a storm coming in, we've got immediate reaction plans in place. So we will do everything we can, and we want to hear from everybody, and we owe everybody an answer.
Further to that, if any of us are invited to a neighborhood meeting or a meeting of citizens like that, I would ask that we request that staff also be included, because a lot of these issues can be avoided. If we have staff there that can cover the information on what is being done, I think staff would appreciate that opportunity also. We need to communicate with our citizens. And the best way to communicate is with people that know what's going on, know what the facts are. And I think we need to, need to make sure whenever possible that we do that.
That would be the people's choice.
We can strongly encourage.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Noticed our power bill funds came in. Carolyn sent out an email, just under $60,000. It appears to be drastically dropping from how it used to be at one point. Or do we get it more than once a year?
We get it quite a few.
Okay. All right. That answered my question. Because I was concerned about, it was right over $100,000 if it's gone down to $60. Okay. Thanks.
It is dropping. And it's dropping through the whole state. I don't know if it is that. It's more going to...
Figure places.
Cars, electric cars, less gas is getting bought, and that's where the power bill comes from, is off the gas act. So we're selling less gas in the state, so the power bill and money is getting less. So we are getting less money.
Gas has been cheap recently, until the hurricanes.
The tax doesn't change.
Tax doesn't change.
Taxes, the taxes are set amounts.
But, you know, if it is, less of it is being bought is trouble.
Yeah, I get you.
And that's the thing, and that's why the bigger cities now, like Raleigh and Charlotte, Wilmington, they want the formula changed. Instead of going on mileage, and that's just company mileage you have to put down, they want to go on lane mileage. So if they haven't grown down four lanes, they will get the majority of the money from the small cars on their two lanes. But that's what they want the formula to change too. Go on lane mileage, just not on straight line.
I know there's a concern in legislature, these funds are decreasing, and they're looking for alternative funding methods for highways and roads maintenance.
They could stay out of court.
Right.
I would like...
Yes, Commissioner Retschberg?
This is an alibi. I just completely let the committee report thing go by. We've got ARPO meeting at the end of this month. We'll hear about the, what's coming next. We did have our initial, our new shoreline management committee on the 25th, meeting on the 25th. The attendance was mostly shoreline, from the shoreline people. A couple of the folks that are in the shoreline meeting were also on the sea level rise committee. So we did have representation from both, but a lot of folks from sea line, the sea level rise committee were unable to make this one. So the meeting was a little focused on shoreline, and unfortunately, it was focused on the near term, you know, about what's the status of 2018, and Matthew coming up the lane, and this and that. So I'm hoping in our next meeting this month, we can start to look toward the long term. I will admit that, you know, when you're up to your tail end in alligators, it's hard to remember that your mission is to drain the swamp. And we're in that stage right now as we try and get the 30-year vision moving.
Right.
We've got folks there, a couple people from CSI, some outside help there that'll help, you know, help us with some of that as we guide it on. And we are looking more to try and get our internal town thoughts together, review our own work, the sea level rise and shoreline management, before we need to get any consultants involved. We need to come up with a town direction and vision, but effectively, it's do what we can to keep the water from getting in the middle of it.
Yes.
When do we, when do we get our report for the monitoring from this past year?
Sometimes, I think toward the end of the month, isn't it? We've had all of our energy focused on the FEMA permitting process, rather. And the data that's been there, the data's there, it's been used. We just don't have paper for anybody, including us. We don't need it.
They gave them some leeway so they could concentrate on the permitting process. I can't remember how much leeway we gave them, but I know we gave them some.
There are a lot of people anxiously awaiting that report.
As soon as we get it, be it every once in a while. Any, any other Commissioner's agenda items? The only thing I'd like to report is I've had two letters from the Dare County, Janice Williams and others on appointing a representative to the Dare County Tourism Board. I will, according to good business practice, I will answer those letters and state that that will be deferred until the December 6 meeting. And we set the agenda for that meeting. We'll make sure that that is on that agenda for the December 6 meeting. Is there any other business that we need to conduct today? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. I don't think we need a mid-month meeting. I will be at the town from tomorrow through the 12th of April. Ten Walters will be filling in for us. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Motion made and all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Hold it slight, son.